Harding.
Here.
Jerem.
Here.
Melton.
Here.
Pauls.
Here.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item six through ten relate to the same project located at 192nd Street and West Maple Road, the Antler View Development. Item six is an ordinance to rezone this property from AG to DR. Item seven, an ordinance to rezone this property from AG to MU. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item eight, a resolution to approve the plat for Antler View. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item nine, an ordinance to approve a mixed-use development agreement for Antler View. Item 10, a resolution to approve the subdivision agreement for Antler View.
Public hearing on agenda items numbers six through 10 are today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed.
Move the approval.
Sir.
Moved and seconded to approve items six through 10, and no lights, roll call.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item six through 10 approved, seven to zero. Items 11 and 12 relate to the same project located at 88th Street and West Center Road, the Loveland Flats Development. Item 11, an ordinance to rezone this property from R2 to R6. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. B is communication in opposition to the rezoning. Item 12, an ordinance to rezone a PUR overlay district in R6, low-density, multiple-family residential district for the same location. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda items numbers 11 and 12 are today. Proponents, please.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the council. Larry Jovan, 11440 West Center Road, appearing on behalf of the applicant, Loveland Flats LLC. With me today from Loveland Flats LLC is Jesse Calabroto, the developer. Also with me today is Kyle Hasi of E&amp;A Consulting, the consulting engineers on this particular project. This is a 1.34 acre tract of land located at about 88th and West Center Road. There we go. So, just to get your bearings, this is 87th Avenue here. This is West Center Road here. Of course, this is 88th Street. And then, this is the Loveland West neighborhood to the north. The proposed area right now is mostly undeveloped. There is one existing vacant house on the site, but it's comprised of four individual lots at this point in time. They'll be combined administratively later if this approval today take place. So, we're seeking the rezoning of this property from R2, single-family residential, to R6, low-density, multifamily residential district with the R5 more restrictive site regulators being applied here. And also, of course, with the PUR overlay district attached to this, which is a planned unit redevelopment district that will really lock in the site regulators and also will provide for some waivers to certain site regulators to make this site fit that we'll get into in more detail in a little bit. So, this is the site plan. You have two, two-story buildings. There are 18 units total. There's nine units in each one of the buildings. They are only two stories, as I said. The unit mix is six one-bedroom units and 12 two-bedroom units, as far as the unit mix. There are certain amenities. There's a fitness studio here. The trash dumpster is located here. There's also a three-foot screening wall out on West Center Road that will allow, as we'll talk in a little bit, shifting the project more towards West Center Road and improving the streetscape generally on West Center Road, which is really the intention of the whole urban design code anyways, improving our streetscapes and also minimizing impacts to the adjacent residential property owners. There are 43 parking stalls with 18 units, so you can see there's quite a bit of parking here. There are 15 surface parking stalls. And then, there are 28 garages, and 14 of which are tandem garages, so there are two-car garages where you can fit two cars in there. So, there's quite a bit of garages in relationship to the number of units. Again, attached to the fitness studio is a grilling area and a little respite-type area. The target market, this is not age-restrict in the sense there's not a covenant requiring that you be 55 or older, but the target market is for people that are 55 years and older. There are certain amenities, for example, in the restrooms, there's, in each one of the units, there's grab bars. Also, there are no steps to get into the first four units, and there's no steps to get into the fitness studio. So, it's really designed to fit the needs of an older resident, 55 and older, but again, it's not age-restricted. As far as the PUR is concerned, there are a number of waivers that we're seeking in order to, again, improve the overall streetscape and then improve or minimize the impacts to adjacent neighbors to the east and the north, and even the west for that matter. But, so what we have here is there is a 88th Street front yard setback that has been reduced from the required 35 feet to five feet. And then, on 87th Avenue, buffer yard from 20 feet to five feet. And then, on 87th and 88th, the landscape depth has been reduced from 15 to five feet. And then, the north side buffer yard has been reduced from 20 to 10 feet. But, as you'll note, that there is a landscape buffer that is going to be installed with a significant amount of landscaping. But, the idea was really to shift the buildings more towards West Center Road and providing the 24-foot drive lane here, and then the 10-foot landscape buffer here to minimize the impacts on the neighbors to the north. Again, with the PUR, it's similar to a planned unit development or PUD, so what you see is what you get. We can't make any significant modifications to this without coming back to the Planning Board and the City Council. Obviously, there can be minor adjustments that are done administratively, but anything major, which in a case like this, a lot of things would be deemed a major change. So, again, what you see is what you get. It fully intends to build what we're showing here today. I do have some renderings of the development. This is sort of a bird's-eye view, looking, I believe, from 87th Avenue to the northwest. And this is a building elevation, looking northeast from 88th Street and West Center Road. And as far as the building materials, again, because this is a PUR, there's the urban design code that kicks in. I know that Mr. Calabroto had worked with the Planning Department with respect to the material choices and the overall architectural theme of the development. You'll notice there's low-pitched roofs that really fit into the fabric of the residential neighborhood to the north and to the east, so that was done by design. The two-stories, it's no higher than any two-story house that would be adjacent to it. So, we think it fits very well within the fabric of the neighborhood. This is the building elevations from 87th Avenue, looking west. And then, I'll show these and if it goes, zooms out any further. This would be a south-facing view from the north side of the property, so you can see the landscape buffer. You can see the buildings, of course, and then, this is the fitness studio. And then, the last building elevation look is from West Center Road, looking north, and you can see the three-foot screen wall here, and of course, landscaping there. This is, again, a low-density residential housing project. The unit count, I believe, is 13.4 units per acre. So, again, if low density's 15 units per acre, we're actually lower than that threshold. As far as the materials, we're showing brick and then cement board, both horizontal and vertical, cement board, and then asphalt shingles. The average rents are between $1,200 and $1,600 a month, so that's a pretty significant rental rate for this type of product. There was a neighborhood meeting, I believe, on April 8th. I was not in attendance, but I think it was well-attended from what Jesse told me, and said there was about 25 people there. They went through the project and the proposed project and discussed all the various issues. It did go to the Planning Board with a favorable recommendation, of course, from staff, and then also, it had a unanimous recommendation of approval from the Planning Board as well. So, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. I know that Jesse wanted to say a few things about the project as well, and then we'll respond to any opposition that there may be regarding this particular project. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents?
Good afternoon, council. Jesse Calabroto, 16818 Spring Plaza, here to answer any questions. And real quick, wanted to give a quick description of why we wanted to do the project and kind of what inspired the project. So, my family has been part of this area for well over 30 years. My mom owned the hair salon, Sheer Madness, right on the other side of Center Street for over 25 years there. As we grew up, and I have had a business, about six lots to the south of this for the last 10 years. We owned a building up there until recently. And so, I've driven by this parcel thousands of times over the years, and I've always dreamt of doing something to this parcel with this intent, knowing that through my mother's business, what the makeup of the neighborhood was and what some of the use that we believed would be good in the area. So, that's what really inspired this project that we've put in front of you guys today. And I think there's a couple of things to be said. One, we are targeting that 55 and older resident because we understand that there is a large makeup of that in the district there. And I think one of the things we'd like to see is to free up some of the housing for some of the younger families within that neighborhood, and then provide, you know, an opportunity of a different style of housing for some of those residents of the area. There's complete walkability. There's unimproved sidewalks in this area. There are no sidewalks on the majority of what's here. And obviously, with these improvements that will all be in place, the middle school and the high school students run through this area daily, spring and fall. And obviously, with this, we'll be able to take them up off the road and put them on sidewalks, providing some safer travel through there. We are seeking no public incentive with this project, so all those improvements are private investment, which I think's important to note. And we're pretty excited about it. We've had, on April 8th, we had a good meeting with the residents. The HOA put out the notice. We contacted the HOA. The HOA put out the notice. And we had good attendance, and we had great dialogue with the neighborhood. And frankly, I think that that meeting brought to light some concerns and some things to improve this project, and we've taken those into consideration and actually made some adjustments according to those conversations, which overall will make this a much stronger project for that neighborhood. So, we're thrilled to present this today, and we ask for your recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Come on down. If you want, those that are going to speak, if you would like, if you want to come down, please. Yeah, if you can come down to the first row, all of those who want to speak.
Go ahead.
Doesn't matter who's first.
You're up first.
Thank you. My name is Alice Hall. I live at 2315 South 88th Street. That's north of Arbor. I beat you on the time I've been looking at that lot. We moved here in 1967 and have lived in that same house all those years. That lot has been an issue since the time I can remember. I guess, first of all, I wanted to ask Mr. Harding, since you were on the Planning Board and you heard all of this, excuse me, and you voted in favor.
Excuse me, ma'am. Before you move on, if you got a question, you can just raise the question, and when we get done with the public hearing.
Well, this is part of, this is part of my presentation.
Okay.
I really feel, since you have voted for them at the beginning, we were wondering if you might recuse yourself from the voting of this time. We'd be kind of silly to sit here and wait for you to vote against us again, because we already know what your feeling is on it.
I think you'll get a chance at the, after the, after the public hearing. He'll make any comments that he needs to make at that point. Right now, we're at the public hearing stage, so we're taking testimony from those who are in opposition right now.
Okay. I think we're kind of on the right track, but we're not there yet. The, it's too condensed, it's too much for that small area. And what we were hoping was that you would recommend, hopefully, that we could meet again with Jesse and possibly fine-tune it a little bit. We think it's too dense for the space that we have. Excuse me, I need water. Too dense for the space that we have there. Traffic situation, we already have the shopping center, the bank, all of that is, you know, the traffic is horrendous. We like the fact that it is for the older people. That is good. But, I don't see how that's going to draw people of that age when it's two-story buildings. Our residences are ranches, and these, again, are going to tower over our little ranches. We just feel like there's some fine-tuning that needs to be done. Over the years of presenting this to the City Council, we were told by, over and over, from different years of City Councils, "Don't worry, we're not going to allow your space to go anything but R2, because we know what it will do to the impact of your little neighborhood." So, I told Jesse, I like the R part. The rest of it has me concerned. We want to keep it R2 as much as we can, because that's what our neighborhood is. And anything, any changes, we fear that it could, in time, change like it did on the other side of Center, because those were all little ranch houses, too, at one time, and now they're all businesses. So, I'm asking, I guess what I'm asking you is for, kind of let us meet again and fine-tune this. We think we're on the right track. We're residences, but it's still not there yet. Okay?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Any other opponents who wish to be heard?
My name is Janine Volker, and I own the property at 2614 South 87th Avenue, and I would like to present my opposition to the proposed building of the 19 apartment complex on the lots located between 87th Avenue and South 88th Street along West Center. My family has lived at 2614 South 87th since 1958, and I have seen many changes in the area. In this change, I don't feel as good. I like seeing the green spaces as I turn onto 88th Street to go home. I also like a clear view of Center Street. The way it's proposed, I'll be looking at either a brick wall or a wooden wall or a building. I won't be able to see anything but that structure. I don't believe the proposed structure will fit with the design in our neighborhood. I agree with Alice that we need to tweak it a little bit. The proposed building is too big, too overwhelming, and will block out the area, the beauty of the area. And when this idea was first presented to us, those within 300 feet, it was proposed as an over 55-plus apartment complex. I did not get notified of the April 8th meeting, so I did not attend. I would have, if I would have known, but I didn't, I didn't, I wasn't aware. And so, at the city planning meeting, it was stated that the units were not, if the units were not rented to the populace, then they were going to be changed to the demographic. What would they be changed to? Low-income people? College students? What is it going to be? Shouldn't the plan be required to stay as it is proposed? I would think so. This structure should be required to be a 55-plus apartment complex only, although one-story housing is what soon-to-be-retired downsizing people want, not stairs. During the city planning meeting, I don't believe our objections were considered. I believe they had made up their mind before we even spoke. To emphasize this point, I find out that the applicant worked with the Planning Department in designing the buildings and setback to complement the existing context of the neighborhood. It doesn't. Sorry, Brinker, but I'm going to do this. During the, during the meeting, it was brought up that somebody who was running for City Council had a sign on the proposed property. It seemed like a conflict of interest as the candidate who signed is on the proposed site, was running for District Six, whereas the property is located in District Five. I'm concerned about the construction process. Something this big is going to require lots of time, lots of workers, and lots of equipment. I don't want to watch or listen to all the noise associated with this construction. Something this big won't be built overnight, and we will have to see all of the ugliness of construction for many months. We had to listen to the construction of the Loveland Shopping Center recently. It's too soon to do it again. Also, I don't believe that our streets can handle this much traffic. There won't be enough parking for the workers, nor would we want construction equipment parked on our narrow streets. After completion of the project, I'm concerned about the noise level of all of the residents and their cars and the garbage, because where it's going to be right there. And so, I don't think that the complex is appropriate for that. In addition to the existing noise-reducing green space that we have now, it will be replaced by noise-amplifying living and parking structures. I'm concerned about the increase in traffic during construction and after the residents move in. Where's everyone going to park? On an already congested street? Or are they going to be parking in the neighborhood and trampling people's yards as they go to the site? Will the construction workers' parked vehicles make the residents in the neighborhood weave around them, causing potential accidents? West High Athletic Students use 88th Street for training. With all of the additional cars, they will have a difficulty time navigating the area. This could become an accident waiting to happen. Yes, we don't have any sidewalks on, and he's proposing sidewalks on his area? Well, what about the rest of it? Are we going to be paying for those? I don't think so. If they haven't been there for 50-some years, why would we want to put them in now? And I object to the zoning waiver request of only 15 feet from Center and only five feet on 88th and 87th. It seems kind of dangerous. If a car was to lose control, it could hit the building or a resident or anything, as there is nothing to stop it. The 45-tall complex would block our views of Center Street, and anyone driving along Center Street would just to see the complex. They wouldn't be able to see the well-maintained homes or the pride this neighborhood has. This proposed complex is too close to the road, and it will hinder the visibility of drivers turning either from Center Street or onto Center Street. There are so many accidents. I know that the Traffic Department says that there aren't. Well, there was just one just on Sunday, that somebody just ran into a pole. It was at night, but there was, nobody else was involved. So, how are we going to say that that's not going to happen again? Also, I'm concerned that our resale values will go down on our properties. They went up this year because of the coordination of the assessors' formulas, and if the property values decline as a result of the new complex, will we be paying higher taxes on less valuable homes? Maybe. The use of large dumpsters is a concern, the noise of the dumpster lids being banged at all hours of the day or night, not to mention the increase of garbage and construction waste and the potential of it not being contained, but blowing against our fences or into our yards. Why would she, why would we have to clean up other people's garbage? We don't do that now, because our neighborhood is nice, and everybody picks up their garbage. And I also just learned that the Sunset Country Club, just west of 90th, was being sold, and that they were planning on building townhouses, condos, and apartments. I, as a 50-plus person, yes, hard to believe I am, I would rather live over by the golf course, where I would have left less traffic noise and be able to enjoy the green space than in these apartments. I'm not opposed to the development of these lots, as long as they are in an aesthetic harmony with our quiet, ranch-style homes on large, tree-filled family spaces. This proposed monstrosity does not fit with our neighborhood. And to reiterate, if you think this development plan is acceptable, then you should require the developer to restrict it to an only 55-plus complex, as originally planned. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents who wish to be heard? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Barbara Tracy, 8723 Arbor. I'm on the corner of 87th Avenue and Arbor. I've been coming down here for years as well, because this just keeps happening on the site. And I, too, recall many promises that it would not change from an R2 zoning. I don't think that the project itself is ugly, or I think it's pretty, it's well-designed. I just think it's too large a footprint and too tall a project for this residential community. And I don't think the fact that it sits on Center should be a reason why people think it would be okay to put it there. I'm going to guess that not any of you on the council that live in a nice residential neighborhood would want a two-story, two-two-story apartment buildings looming over your house. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents who wish to be heard? Thank you. Yes, sir.
Mike Sequenzia, 2605 South 88th Street, 150 foot from the property. And I'm not as good a speaker as the rest of these people, so I brought more pictures. But anyway, I moved in my home in 1985, and I'll show you what. There used to be a nice two-story house across the street from me. This is what I look at now. The neighbor next to me, going towards Center, this is what he looks at now. This is all US Bank parking. There's no sidewalks on 88th Street or 87th Ave., so the West Side kids, they run up and down our street, whether it's wrestling, swim team, track. They have to use the street. So, we've got the West Side kids' traffic going up 88th Street during the school year. Then Arbor is one block to the north of us. So, they come off 90th to take the kids to school, and they have to go up Arbor, east. And in the mornings and afternoons, that's only one way. And his proposal is they're going to let traffic in 88th Street. It looks like they're going to go out 87th Ave. They had a meeting April 8th, and I was on vacation, and I live 150 foot from the property. And the people that I talked to behind me and on the side of me, there's only two people that made it to that meeting that were in 300 feet. They didn't have any more meetings. This is the house that, that's the one that they just tore down after, what is it, Bert Weiss, I guess, bought the property. There was a ranch-style home, just like mine, two away to Center. They tore that down right away and made that an empty lot. There's another picture of that one. So, here's a picture of my home. And my neighbors, Bill and Deb Lang, and they were proposing to build this building, give them a five-foot, you know, take 30 feet off and put it almost to Center Street. Well, you've got the traffic from US Bank, and now with the big Schlossberg Loveland Building there, their parking's in the back of the building, so they have to come out through the parking lot that the bank uses. And, you know, what I was getting at is, why couldn't we do something like this? Or like one of these? You know, there's four lots there. And I got some other ones here. And I was thinking it's going to be like a monopoly, you know? If you start doing that on Center, what's to stop these three rental houses? That's 87th Ave., 87th Ave., 87th Street. Those are on Center. Those are all rental properties. So, if this guy would purchase a house to the north- This is the house that, uh, that's the one that they just tore down after this, what is it, Burt Weiss, I guess, bought the property. There was a ranch-style home, just like mine, two away to center. They tore that down right away and made that an empty lot. There's another picture of that one. So here's a picture of my home. And, uh, my neighbors Bill and Deb Lang, and they were proposing to build this building, give them a five-foot, you know, take thirty feet off and put it almost to Center Street. Well, you've got the traffic from U.S. Bank, and now with the big Schlossberg Loveland Building there, their parking's in the back of the building, so they have to come out through the parking lot that the bank uses. And, you know, what I was getting at is, why couldn't we do something like this? Or like one of these? You know, there's four lots there. And I got some other ones here. And I was thinking it's gonna be like a monopoly, you know? If you start doing that on center, what's to stop these three rental houses? That's, uh, Eighty-seventh Ave, Eighty-seventh Ave, Eighty-seventh Street. Those are on center. Those are all rental properties. So if this guy would purchase a house to the north of him, right away thinks he can build a fourplex or something. Uh, let's see what else I got for you today. But there's just too much traffic with, uh, West Side Middle School and West Side High School on Eighty-Eighth. And to add more traffic with this complex, which is overgrown, I just think there's gonna be more and more accidents. Okay, then on, uh, this is what I couldn't believe. This is Ninety-Sixth and Center. And I'm sure you guys all went through that one. That's, they were waiting in line for these. These were four-hundred-and-some thousand apiece. They put four facing Center Street and four facing Ninety-Sixth Street. I'd like to know what the lot size is for these. But those are, I mean, there was a waiting list. As far as I know, they've got every one of them sold. And I was thinking, you know, why couldn't they do something like this instead of this big building where they have to have all these, you know, easements and all that stuff? But I had mentioned it to them on the side of Canfield Shopping Plaza. There was lots over there. That, you know, and I, I don't know if they sold now, but we thought, if you're gonna build something huge, why not do it on the commercial side of the street? You know, there's two sides to that. And I thought, you know, you could put apartment complexes on both sides of that road behind, uh, Canfield, and it wouldn't bother anything, because they go right out to that, uh, side street that comes off Ninetieth. But that goes headright to the interstate, you know, or shopping. But, you know, the proposed thing, I think, is just too big, and to have one meeting and only one, two people out of three-hundred feet come to the meeting, and then all of a sudden start working with the planning department, say, hey, it's okay, everybody thought it was a good idea, let's go ahead and go with it. You know, I just feel like, you know, being a member of the West Side Neighborhood Association, you know, I'm getting it shoved down my throat, you know? That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, do the proponents wish any rebuttal time?
Please, yes, Mr. President, members of the council, Ari Jobin, Hundred-and-fourteen Forty West Center Road, appearing on behalf of the applicant. Uh, yeah, I'll just touch on a few things. Again, the, the master plan calls for this to be low-density residential. This is thirteen-point-four units per acre. That is considered low-density under the City of Omaha's code and master plan. Um, I think we talked about this earlier. In, in my twenty-seven years of, of practicing, I, I think there's been twenty people that have looked at this site to try to redevelop it for, you know, more of a commercial office, more intense-type use. And in every one of those instances, I didn't think it was a great idea. I don't think planning department thought it was a great idea. I think for the first time ever that I've seen this site, which is sort of the gift that keeps on giving, there's a, a use that's really compatible with the surrounding adjacent residential neighbors to the north and to the east, and also to the commercial, uh, to the west. You are situated on West Center Road, uh, as far as the frontage. You have Eighty-seventh Street, which is right in, right out only on that particular intersection. And then on Eighty-Eighth Street, you have a full movement intersection on Eighty-Eighth Street. In any event, uh, we think that this proposed use is entirely compatible with the area and where it's situated in relationship to, uh, West Center Road and the, uh, single-family residential neighbors. This is a conventional financed, uh, development. This is not low-income housing tax credit project at all, so it is conventional financing, meaning there's market rate rents here. I told you before, the rental rates are twelve-hundred to sixteen-hundred dollars a month, which is a pretty good rental rate, uh, for any apartment in this town. Uh, as far as the construction period, he anticipates that the project will be completed in twelve months, so that's a relatively short construction period. A lot of times the apartments will be, you know, eighteen months or so, so this is actually about six months shorter. Why? Because it's not that big of a project. It's, it's eighteen units, it's two buildings, and then, of course, the fitness studio, which will be, uh, constructed last. Uh, all the staging will be onsite, so there won't be people or equipment parking on the streets. I think Mr. Calabret will do whatever he needs to do to make sure that the, during the construction period, that we minimize impacts to the adjacent, uh, neighbors as well. As far as the dumpster, of course, it's required to be screened and enclosed and constructed with the same materials as the buildings that are located on the site as well, so that, you know, for a dumpster, we've had a dumpster location case in this particular area before, and, uh, this will be compatible with the structures that are, are actually there. Uh, I talked to, to Jesse about, you know, the times of when the dumpsters would be emptied. We can make sure that they don't, uh, empty them before eight AM or after five PM, so we can do it really during normal business hours to also minimize the impacts of the adjacent properties. As far as, I think the, the last, the last couple things is the height. At the peak is under thirty-four feet, so again, it, it isn't a whole lot taller than any other two-story residential, single-family house, uh, that's constructed in Omaha. Uh, we think that, uh, it's actually a very innovative design, and with roof lines are, are unique. And again, it's obviously not uncommon to work with planning department with respect to the architectural nature of the project, as well as the fact that it's a PUD, which generally means that the planning department imposes a higher standard on, on construction and site layout, and so we think that we've done that as well. I did want to point out that, uh, kind of easier to point to. So, the setback of the fitness studio, for example, is setback to the same location as the single-family residential house to the east, so that's where that particular dimension came from. As far as the buildings themselves, they're, they sit about thirty-five feet off of the back of curb to the first building, and to this building as well. So you have a five-foot green space, five-foot sidewalk, and then you have ten feet to the screen wall, and then the, of course, the screen wall is three feet height, in height, and then you have about fifteen feet to the building, so you have about thirty-five feet from the back of curb to each one of the buildings. And then, of course, you have nice landscaping along, uh, Center Street. So again, that's what we were trying to do by the Urban Design Code, is improve our streetscapes. The PUR was designed to take these sites and have innovative design and to try to lessen the impacts to the adjacent residential neighbors. I think that's what we've done here. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. I know Kyle Hossi and, uh, Mr. Calabretto are here as well to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Public hearing is closed. Mr. Jerram.
Mr. Jobin, if there's, there's a couple things I wanted to go over with you, and that is the north buffer landscape. Is, is there a plan yet, or is that?
This, this is a PUR, so it's just like a planned unit development. So again, what you see is what you get. These, these trees, which are conifers and deciduous trees, uh, here are shown along this board. Those will be planted in that number along the back end, so that is essentially the landscape plan.
So in the interior, in the middle, uh, to the north of the driveway by where the dumpsters are situated, will there be evergreen landscape buffer there on the north side of that drive?
On the north side of the drive is the ten-foot landscape buffer with that number of trees being planted, and it's shown here on the plan as landscape buffer.
Right, but the question was, are they deciduous trees or evergreen trees?
Oh, they're evergreens. You can see the, the green are evergreen, and then these lighter shaded colors, uh, trees are deciduous trees.
And then, since it's the Urban Design Code, will there be the dumpsters screened by materials that match the block and brick of the buildings?
Yes, they'll be required to be enclosed, and
Gated.
They will be compatible with the building materials of the particular buildings.
And will the, um, green space that's depicted upon the drawing that's green, I'm guessing means it's grass, will that be irrigated?
Yes, it will be.
Professionally maintained?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. There are no further lights. Is your motion?
I would move to approve.
We've been seconded to approve items eleven and twelve. Uh, there are no further lights. Roll call.
Harding.
And on whether or not I need to recuse myself before I vote.
Paul Kret, City Attorney. There's nothing in either what state law, city ordinances, or the council rules that would prevent you from voting on this matter?
Thank you. Yes.
Jerram.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Items eleven and twelve approved, seven to zero. Item thirteen, a resolution to approve the preliminary plat for Civic Square located at eighteen oh four Capitol Avenue. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda, item number thirteen. It's today.
Good afternoon. Brian Shealy with Olson Associates, Twenty-One Eleven South Sixty- seventh, number two hundred. Uh, I'm the civil engineer for the project here on behalf of the applicant, Tetrad. This project is at eighteen oh one Capitol for, uh, home of the, now former Civic Auditorium. Uh, the excavation has recently been filled in. They'll be, uh, getting that site all seeded and closed out soon, so that's been good to see that progress nicely. Uh, we're here with a prelim plat for Civic Square, and, uh, I'll just run through the site plan quickly. I've got a rendering to show as well, and then I can answer any technical questions that anyone may have. Uh, so the site plan consists of six lots, one of which will be the existing parking garage at the corner of Nineteenth and Capitol. Uh, there will be four proposed buildings onsite, uh, actually up in this corner. That will be, uh, they'll, it'll, it'll appear as one building, but they'll be constructed separately, which is why we've got two lots there. There will be a, a dividing line within that building. And then the outlot will be a, sort of a courtyard, open area in the center. Uh, potentially a elevated crosswalk across Seventeenth, and then we will work with Public Works and per, perform a traffic study prior to coming in for final plat, uh, to look at what the streetscapes will look like along Capitol and Chicago Street. So that will be part of the process that is yet ahead of us. Uh, I have a bill, a, a site rendering here, again, sort of looking from the south at the open area in the middle, and the four proposed buildings around it, as well as the existing parking garage over here. So that's a real brief walkthrough of the site, but I would be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Mr. Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President, if you would. And just name and address again, for the record.
Uh, Brian Shealy with Olson, excuse me, Brian Shealy with Olson Associates, Twenty-One Eleven South Sixty- seventh, number two hundred.
Great, thanks. So we appreciated having a little briefing this morning, too, uh, on the project and the status and the, and the timeline and the thought going forward, but I just wanted to engage you a little bit on that, given the high, high-profile nature of this location downtown and
Certainly.
I think a lot of interest in what happens here next. So you reviewed some of the proposed uses there, which I think are described as civic and also, um, office and residential, um, and the preliminary plat today, which is just preliminary plat, as you, as you note, um, conceives of six lots in that respect, and also includes some visuals that will, um, provide some indication of where those buildings will be placed. But I think it's important to note, this is just conceptual at this point, right?
Correct.
I know some folks see a visual or a diagram, and I think that's exactly what's gonna happen, but it'd be accurate to say that this is just the very initial steps of still seeking, um, tenants and anchor tenants and actual uses and, and clients, um, in this redevelopment process, right?
Correct, still very, very early in the process on that, and Tetrad is working on that portion of the project.
And if there was a timeline to describe in terms of when this gets a little more real and, and might be more solidified, how would you describe that timeline?
Uh, hoping to have made significant progress, uh, on, on the entitlements process by the end of the year.
Okay. Which involves redevelopment agreements through Planning Board and City Council, again, and
Correct.
Right. So in an ideal world, um, there could be some further action other than demolition on the site, um, two thousand and eighteen?
Difficult to say at this point, but potentially, yes.
Okay, all right. Any event, uh, when things do get more solidified and you're in, um, actual plan and agreement phase, that'll come back to the council for additional review. More discussion about two-way streets and streetscapes, which I agree are important to a development like this, and we'd have some additional input at that point, right?
Absolutely, and we'll have a significant amount of coordination with Public Works in the process, uh, so that'll be well-vetted out with the city.
Okay, look forward to doing that, and I'd, uh, motion to approve this today.
Seconded to approve item thirteen. There are no further lights. Roll call.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerram.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item thirteen approved, seven to zero. Item fourteen, an application to consider a Class D liquor license for Abay LLC, doing business as Blondo Convenient Food Mart, seven nine zero one Blondo Street, A's Communications opposing the application.
Public hearing on agenda, item number fourteen. It's today. Proponents, please.
Yes, Michael Polk, Two Seven One Two South Eighty-Seventh Ave. And here with me is Tesphi Ken Day on his application for his liquor license. I'd like to point out to the council, Mr. Ken Day also owns Hamilton Convenient Food Mart. He also owns Blondo Convenient Food Mart at Sixty-Sixth and Blondo, and an apartment complex at Sixty-First in Ames. Uh, Mr. Ken Day has invested well over half a million dollars in the City of Omaha, and he purchased this building for a hundred and seventy thousand dollars, plans to put a hundred and ninety thousand dollars in improvements into this building, and he asked for the approval of this liquor license today.
Are there any other, did you wish to, are there any proponents who wish to be heard? Thank you.
Yeah, I
Name and address for the record, please.
Tesphi Ken Day, One Two Zero South Sixty-Eighth Street. Um, as Mr. Michael said, I bought it, uh, this location, a hundred and seventy thousand dollars, and there's the construction. Give me a cut to do improvements, uh, and improvement will cost me a hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars. They give me a plan, and, um, we're gonna extend the building and, uh, renovation as well.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Mr. Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. Uh, I wanted to just engage you for a minute. This is in my district, and I did hear a lot of input from my neighborhoods there, the Penny Park Neighborhood Association and the Benson Gardens Boulevard Association across the street there, uh, in opposition to the, to the license, and we have some communications to that effect. Did you have a chance to meet with them or discuss this with them?
No, I didn't.
Okay. We usually do prefer you to do that. Let me just ask you a few questions. And I think the nature of the opposition isn't towards you personally. Uh, you have other locations in my, locations in my district, as you noted, Forty-Ninth and Hamilton and, and Sixty-Sixth and Blondo, that I don't think have tavern reports or any, um, negative, um, incidents that are attributable, attributable to management. There have been a fair amount of police calls, however, to those locations, but again, I don't think that's something that you're responsible for. But that is part of the concern here, I think. This is a very sensitive corridor at Seventy-Ninth and Blondo. Uh, we have had a lot of incidents around here recently, including a homicide across the street, and, uh, the police department is pretty active in the apartments across the street, just to the, uh, north. So I think this causes some concern for neighbors when they see the application notice and haven't otherwise had communications. So there's cause for concern there, but there's also cause for optimism right there, because you're right, you're right next to Herald Square, uh, which is currently being marketed for redevelopment, and we think can be redeveloped into something very positive. Later this fall, the big yellow onions will come down, and they'll start making some physical improvements that I think will help with that effort. Uh, your location being just on the, kind of the front corner of, of where that property is. So another concern they tend to have, too, is the density they, they feel of alcohol opportunities right in this immediate location. They sent us all a list of, you know, seven or eight liquor licenses right there, at least within the, um, a mile of this location, where there is the opportunity to have off-sale part of a mixed-use development at Herald Square, I think that would be welcomed as long as they were part of a bigger idea here, but it does cause them concerned to have one-off walk-up, off-sale chances like this may present. So I think we spoke recently to, it's 66th and Blondo, when you were here, I think you recall, I did not support that one either, for similar reasons, being next to a park and also a daycare there, but again, I can't cite any faults you've had since then, other than some things that I think were outside your power there. But I would note for neighbors, too, that you do have that liquor license today, because ultimately, the city council is a recommending body and not the deciding authority on this, this being, that being the liquor commission. So having said those comments and having engaged my neighborhoods on this, I don't think it's something I can support today, but I would just ask you that, should this be approved today, either by the council or later by the liquor commission, I presume you'll abide by all your responsibilities there of being a good business owner, keeping the property clean, and should Herald Square be redeveloped, productive proponents in that, and also with the neighborhood going forward?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Melton.
Well, I have a question on the timing, if we were to lay this over, is there a timing issue on this?
We have 45 days to rule on it before it has to go back to the Liquor Control Commission.
And I have to say, my concern is that you haven't engaged the neighborhood, maybe you've spoken with Councilman Festerson, not with any of the rest of us, so I would like to give you the opportunity to meet with the neighbors who would like to meet with you, maybe you could show them what you're doing with the property that would maybe improve it, maybe other things that you could work out. I think coming here in a neighborhood like, where the neighborhood has this much opposition, and you haven't taken the time to meet with them, to go to any of the Neighborhood Association meetings, that's concerning to me. So I would ask for a layover if you're willing to do that, if you're not willing to do that, then I think I would have to just vote no today. Is that something you'd be willing to do?
Sure, yeah, first of all, I didn't know they were going to be opposed to me, and I thought it's really convenience food mart, like everywhere I go, they like me, and...
Well, if you meet with them, maybe they will like you, maybe give them the opportunity to meet with you.
Yeah, they probably don't know what I'm going to do, when they see the liquor license, they just oppose it.
That's what I was asking.
But, at my first store at 49th and Hamilton, used to be a little gas station, I pull all the tanks out, make it a really good, nice, convenient food mart, and 66th and Blondo, same thing, and all the neighborhoods happy, they shop there, and they probably don't know what I'm going to do, so...
And you know what, and I think those are all good things, and so maybe...
It's due to the commission on...
It's due to the commission July 31st, so there isn't enough time.
Right.
Okay, well, I guess, you know, at this point, I would still encourage you to meet with the neighbors, you could have maybe shown them pictures of your other ones, kind of sold them on that, and maybe even brought them here today to show us. I wish I could lay it over, but apparently if I did, it would, it would cost you, it'd be like voting no, so, anyway, I was willing to try and give it a shot, but timing-wise, it doesn't look like that can happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Harding.
Actually, I was going to echo what Ms. Melton said, I was going to support a layover, but it sounds like we don't have enough time, so I'll stop my comments there.
Thank you. Mr. Jerem.
Yes, thank you. What was the result at the commission on your other locations on Blondo? What happened?
The commission approved Blondo. Essentially, it was opposed because it was close to a park, and the council voted no, but that's not a legitimate opposition in front of the liquor control commission, so I would ask the council, so the remaining members vote yes on this, because what this ends up being is essentially an extra tax on my client, where we'll have to go down to the liquor control commission. There's not a valid legal opposition to his application, and it just takes time and more money for Mr. Ken Day, who has invested a significant amount of money in this city.
Did the commission issue any restrictions at 69th and Blondo?
No.
So it's wide open?
Yes.
Single sales, everything?
Yes.
Well, we had kind of an analogous situation recently in my district, at 52nd and Leavenworth, where the, one of the first things that I did as a council member was oppose a liquor license after there was a homicide at the location, and we had many years without a liquor license there. And then a new applicant came recently, bought the property, met with a member of the Neighborhood Association Board, and went over a business plan, and came up with 12 agreed-upon conditions, and then we came up with a 13th and adopted a conditional recommendation that was passed five to two, and I think, as I heard my colleagues say, and I agreed at the time, while I could not support that particular license, and in that case, I believe Mr. Festerson didn't either, the council did pass a recommendation affirmatively for approval with those conditions, and I believe it's now been through the commission, if they didn't have a hearing from a protester or something. My view on this one is, having been on the other side of the other one, that we're much better as a council, knowing this is a qualified applicant, which is what the commission looks at heavily, before, then the neighborhood stuff, that it's better to get conditions than nothing, and in fact, the next item up is one that has conditions in a neighborhood that have been working for many years, and I believe they're going to agree to continue the conditions as a, trying to get an approval recommendation from us, and being a good corporate citizen. So I'd ask you if you would be willing to have a recommendation for approval with the agreement that there would be no single sales of beer in containers less than 40 ounces, and no distilled spirits less than 375 ml.
Yeah, that's going to hurt the business a lot nowadays, just at the Blondo, I sell a small bottle than the big bottles, and it just, it's not, it doesn't work for just convenience stores.
See, it's our experience that the neighborhood convenience store becomes the poor person's refrigerator and cooler, and then you have this cycle of people coming back and forth for airplane shots, and 24-ounce cans, Mad Dog, and Whoopay, and other stuff that are high alcohol content, and then you have people stumbling around the neighborhood, so that's what's going to happen at the next one, I feel like it'd be fair to do on this one, but you're not willing to accept that condition, right?
No, yeah, it's going, I won't be...
Mr. Acosta Trejo, if you could come down, I want to ask you a question, and while you're walking down, the question would be this, we heard the applicant say he was not willing to accept the condition, but if we nonetheless made the motion to impose that condition, what bearing does that have on the commission, if that motion were to pass?
William Acosta Trejo, Assistant City Attorney. That is actually a new question on me, and I don't know what the answer would be.
Are you, is it your preference, as the city assistant city attorney who represents the city at the liquor commission, would you rather go having a recommended denial to make that argument, that we requested a condition and didn't get it, or if, because you don't go if we recommend approval and that passes, right?
That's correct. And that, to answer your question, that is something for the newer members that we have discussed with previous city councils, that if there is a question or some concern that the city council can't get over, such as this situation, others that we've had, the only way the city gets a voice is if there is a denial. The question as far as how many days do we have, there's a rule that says you have to pass it within 45 days. Technically, we can let it go without an action within those 45 days, but it's not the same as a denial, because then we have simply pushed it through, and we don't get to have that voice at the liquor control commission. So if there is an issue that can't get resolved here, then the denial is the way that the city council gets to voice its either opposition or willingness to have some other agreement at the liquor control commission.
Thank you, I'd ask the council for the applicant to come back, and I'm sorry, I forgot your last name.
Polk.
Mr. Polk. So just while you've been standing there, have you had a chance to think about, your preference was that you'd rather have us recommend approval so you wouldn't have to have another hearing in Lincoln, but knowing the choice is, I'm thinking, I'm going to make a motion, and the motion is either going to be to recommend approval with these conditions, or if you say no, we're not willing to agree to that, then it's recommended denial, which gets you another contested hearing in Lincoln. What's your, what say you?
We'd rather have you just deny it, because we, I'm pretty confident about going to the commission regarding the objections made here today, and the objections of the neighborhood, with all due respect to the council members, because I feel like the commission is going to approve it, just like they approved 66th Street.
Okay, and then that way, the neighbors have an opportunity, if they really are serious about their opposition, they can work with Mr. Acosta Trejo and go and appear and testify there, so maybe one last call, is there anyone else here from the, for opponents? Okay, thank you.
Mr. Pauls.
I just have one question. How many successful business ventures have you been involved in the city of Omaha?
Three, two convenience stores and apartment, six apartment buildings, apartment complex.
And you can tell me that you've had no issues with the police or problems such as that?
No. As I say, everywhere I go, the neighborhood's happy with me, I do always improvements. I came with 49th and Hamilton, Hamilton Food Mart, in January 2008, it was a little old gas station with two pumps, I took all the tanks out, I do over asphalt, and I do improvements on the building, so the neighborhood was happier for all that. Same thing on 2015, on 66th and Blondo, it was closed, it was weed all over, and I make the, and the parking lot was also a bad shape, they graded it and over asphalted, and when there was, also the tank was removed on that one, that was also old gas station. And they, we did concrete where the ground tank was, and it looks good, and a lot of improvement I did there, and again, neighborhoods are happy there. And this one, and then the apartments, when I bought it, it was 65% occupied, I do a lot of improvements there, now it's 84.4 occupancy on apartments. This one, 7901, I bought it, $170,000, I removed the tanks out, the canopy's still there, but I just, I just wanted that to make it visible, but the ground tank's gone, I did concrete, it looks, the parking lot looked beautiful. All we need to do now, before I spend too much money, I just want to apply, make sure I'm approved on what I'm going to do. I have a contractor, they give me a bid, and they knew all what they're going to do, they're going to extend it, the building by 14 feet by 56 feet on the backside, south side of the building, and they turned to that to, I think, 25 square feet.
Okay, it appears that you are a successful business man, thank you.
Mr. Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President, I didn't want to really get into this too much, but I want to make sure the council has a full picture here, and this isn't a comment, again, on you as a business owner or your investments, because I think that you're well-intentioned and you're doing a decent job at engineering other stores, but there have been 15 police calls to 66th and Blondo just this year, and there were a couple concerning incidents at 49th and Hamilton in 2015, but I presume they've been rectified, because they haven't happened since a sale to a minor and a compliance check on tobacco. So I don't want to say, I don't want the council to have the impression that everything's just fine, I think there is some cause for concern that does back up the neighbors' concerns in this respect, and I think we've heard a clear direction from the applicant, and I think it goes to my initial preference, which is, I think we do deny this today, especially with not having met with the neighbors, or even really having thought about meeting with the neighbors before going through the application phase and reaching your time deadline, so I'd motion to deny.
Moving second to deny the application, one question, how long have you owned the apartments on 61st and Ames?
Two years.
Two years?
Going third year now, yeah.
You're going into the third year?
Yeah.
Okay, so you weren't responsible for what went on there a little earlier, so I'm hoping that, because those apartments weren't, you and I both know that those apartments weren't what they should have been early on, there were a lot of problems at those apartments, there's also been two homicides there over the last five years, but that's a different, that's a different subject, I don't think you owned them at that time.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think it's Benson Crystal Apartments, that's what I own.
I'm sorry?
It's nearby me, but it's not where I am. It's not on the Benson Crystal Apartments.
Okay.
I'm that location, but it's not on my apartment.
Okay, all right, thank you. It's been moved and seconded to deny the application, there are no further lights, roll call.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion to deny was approved, six to one. Item 15, an application to consider a Class D liquor license for Ayub Enterprise Inc., doing business as Midtown Gas and Grocery, 1222 South 24th Street.
Public hearing on agenda item number 15 is today, proponents please.
Good afternoon, members of the council, my name is Vincent, and the last name I spell E-K-E-H, Vincent M.A.K., for the Ayub Enterprise Inc.
Address, please.
122, South 24th Street.
Thank you.
And it goes by another name of Midtown Gas Grocery. This is an existing business, I believe as far back as 2008, but it had been changes of ownership, and actually, the change of ownership is within certain family circles, because the original owner of that location died. So after he's dead, one of his managers, he had other gas stations on 13th Street, the Seventh Heaven Gas Station, so one of the managers was compensated to take care of the other businesses by this present location, and there was a dispute and to settle it, he had to transfer it to the Ayub, who technically is the widow of Mr. Ayub. And since 2008, they had always had a liquor license, and presently, they are operating on a temporary license of the old license, and it was under a one, I believe, enterprises. So we asked that, although I've spoken with Mr. Chris German about his views, as to stipulating to the existing condition of that license, meaning that they don't sell more than 35 ounce beer, single bottles or cans, and the 375 ml liquor. But we're asking the council to reconsider the first condition of not selling beer less than 32 ounces, we're asking for 24 ounces, reason being that this particular location is in between other similarly situated businesses on the same 24th Street.
beer cans, to the never-ending stream of people on foot who would be going in and out of the store, buying the, the single cans of whether they be twelve, eighteen, twenty, twenty-four ounce bottles of beer, cans of beer, cans of potent beer, like I talked about on the previous case of, we'll call it Whoopay and Mad Dog, because there would be this circle during the day, Mr. Eke, of people doing that and then they're urinating in public, they're passing out, they were leaning up against the garages on the north end of this particular location. Then we saw needles. We, we had a lot of issues going back before your time and, and your clients' time. And so while I have, agree with you that there is an existing license with the AMACO, BP, whatever the, the station is now, that Mr. Buchanan owns at 24th and Martha, they've had that license in place long before we've asked for these conditions in between and up to and including Leavenworth Street. The other store, you, I don't think you knew the name of, is All Nations, and that too is one that predates the, the conditions that we've had. But as those licensees come in for renewal or change in ownership, that's where we've caught them in the process and asked for these conditions and to our, to our positivity, I mean, to our surprise, I guess initially, they were very willing to work with us and to accept the conditions. So I don't see how to start, why I would wanna take a chance to going back to what the neighborhood had been. And one thing that I mentioned to you before the meeting that I didn't have a chance to mention during our phone conversation yesterday was, there's really exciting new things coming to 24th Street in the near future and a project that's known as the 24th Street Road Diet. And as the city seeks to change 24th Street between Martha and Leavenworth from a four-way speedway, as many people treat it today, and there has been a fatality very, very close to this store's location, I believe, might have even been a person who worked at the City County Building. That, that project will, in my view, in a major way, create a positive environment for redevelopment, reinvestment in that corridor, which would make your business more valuable. There'd be more demand and it may be something where we would consider removing restrictions in the future because you'd have a full-scale store, not just a convenience store, where you could expand into those garage bays and have produce and other things that all these new people would want. So to me, it's a matter of not changing what we know works and would ask you if, I thought I heard you say you'd be willing to continue all the restrictions except you wanna be able to sell single cans of beer and less than thirty-two ounces.
I would say twenty-four.
So you, you wanna sell twenty-four ounces?
Yes.
And that would, so change thirty-two to twenty-four ounces?
Yes.
Well, I would feel a lot better about this in terms of your license if you'd stick to the thirty-two, but I also know that twenty-four ounce can is a very big can that very few people buy. So I see another light. I'm gonna let, I'm gonna let the next council member ask some questions while I think about it because I know what's there now is working and I'm just hesitant to, to lower that, but...
Ms. Melton.
I have a question and Mr. Acosta Trejo, you may not be able to answer this. I don't expect you to know every liquor license in the city of Omaha and what restrictions we have, but by chance, do you know what everybody else around there has? I mean, I, I know that Councilman Jaram talked about the two that predated the restrictions. Do the rest of the liquor licenses around this have these restrictions?
And the answer to, William Acosta Trejo, Assistant City Attorney, and you were correct. I don't know. But in that corridor, if memory serves correct, we do have a mix of some that are significantly older and so they have their full liquor license, but again, as Councilman Jaram pointed out, there have been some that have come up on renewals that we have had them agree to some form of restriction, just as we have with, I believe, on the north corridor around, I wanna say between 40th and 60th, a lot of those gas stations. It's a, it's a mix between some of the old and then some of the new with restrictions.
For the most part, and if my memory serves me correctly, over the last four years since I've been on here, it's been fairly standard that I think we have requested those restrictions on every liquor license in that general area since I came on council. And I encourage Councilman Jaram to correct me or President Gray. Am I correct on that?
My feeling is you're pretty much correct, yes.
Okay. And I guess I don't have any problem going to twenty-four ounce can. However, if we do do that, I think that the other, the other people around there, in all fairness, should be able to come back in and ask to go to the twenty-four ounce as well. I, my concern is that we're treating people fairly and that we're not just making an exception here and exception there. I like to be somewhat consistent so that when people applying for liquor licenses, they have an idea before they come in of what we're going to do. I won't make any comments on the next agenda item, but I, I think what we need to do is just make sure that we're being consistent with applicants. And again, I wouldn't have any problem reducing it to twenty-four, but I would like the other applicants to know that they should be able to come in and, and ask for that as well. So that would be, just wanna make that statement.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. As Councilman Jaram has noted, I think this is one of the more sensitive areas in the city, that intersection of 24th and Leavenworth and then a few blocks to the south there where this, this resides. And I think that much like the next agenda item, it has my concern because it is a center of social concern and alcoholism concern and a high degree of police calls, that I think does have a brighter future ahead of it and it's starting to happen. But to me, I don't think we're there yet and I'm on, I'm teetering, even approving it with the current conditions. I did not vote for the one on 24th and Leavenworth for this reason, but I would have to say if we're lessening the restrictions, I think I'll be voting no today. And I think there is that consistency concern as well with, with others nearby. So I wanted to add that comment to the discussion here.
Thank you. Mr. Jaram.
One of the things I also wanna tell you about the restrictions that we've, we've passed since they've been imposed, there's been a developer who, I think it was twenty-four, twenty-eight unit development across the street at the site of the former St. Anne Catholic Church on the north side of Columbus Park. So that's, that was probably a six or eight million dollar project than the, the old, I think it's Traders Row or Travers Row at 26th Avenue and St. Mary's, just on the north side of Leavenworth. That project came in because of getting rid of the single sales in the former convenience store there. So I know what we're doing is having incredible return in terms of improving the community. So I'd, I'd ask you this question because I agree with Ms. Melton. It wouldn't be fair to the other licensees who have agreed to the no single sales of beer less than thirty-two ounces if, if, to reconsider your position before making my motion.
Okay. If I may...
But I would, I would offer you this. If after the road diet is completed, that construction project, if you wanna come in because there's other development that you're expanding your store and your business in which you're offering to provide a more full-service offering, then I might, might be willing to reconsider then, but otherwise, I feel like I have to make a motion to deny today. So what's your answer?
Okay, before I answer you, I would want to make a little comment about what, from what you had said about knowing the original owner, Mr. Ayub. And that place had been in existence over four years, as I say today. And all this time, as you said, was a good man to the community. And bearing in mind that why we are asking for that is within Matter and 24th and down, they all have twenty-four. Chronicle started barely six months ago, has twenty-four. Now, I would ask that you consider our meeting today as a re-application or reconsideration of the existing license and not as a new application. Then there's a difference, there's a track as to what has been transpiring, what has been going on all this while. So looking at what had transpired before, I would ask that you...
Thank you. I did, I did think about that. And here's something else that came to mind while I was thinking about it, is that when your client took over this store, they got a temporary operator's permit, right?
Yes.
The T O P license?
Yes.
And on that T O P license, when your client took possession of the, of the business, he understood the conditions that were in place, right?
Yes.
Right. So that's, that's a lot different than, you know, asking us to think about a change. He knew what he was getting into at the time he got into it. So to me, that's why I'd ask for your answer on the thirty-two ounces. Is it, are you gonna stick with the current conditions or do, do you want a motion to deny?
Okay.
Okay. Well, with that agreement, I would make a motion to approve this license, subject to no sales of beer in single containers less than thirty-two ounces and no sales of distilled spirits less than three hundred and seventy-five milliliters.
Second. No further lights. Roll call.
Harding.
Yes.
Jaram.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item fifteen approved, seven to zero. Item sixteen, an application to consider a Class D liquor license for Four Seasons Convenience Store LLC, doing business as Four Seasons Convenience Store, 3932 North 16th Street.
Public hearing agenda item number sixteen. This today proponents please.
This Michael Polk, 2712 South 87th Ave. Here for Four Seasons Convenience Store. And here with me are the four owners.
Yeah.
Go ahead. State your name and address.
Pranu Awali.
What's your address?
My address is 825 North 46th Street.
My name is Maupel. My address is 530 South 30th Streets, Apartment One.
My name is Biniam Abara. My address is 825 North 45th Street, Apartment 15.
My name is Ayele Asadam. I'm in 1306 North 106 Court, Apartment 24.
And these four gentlemen are proposing to purchase this building on 16th Street and then to put in a convenience store and they'd ask for a liquor licenses, you know, along with that. This is not, you know, they're not asking to put, you know, just a liquor store, it'd be a full convenience store of all foodstuffs, like Hamilton Convenience Food Store or Belando Convenience Food Store. In fact, this gentleman used to work for Mr. Kendeg and that's how he got interested in the business. They're investing their own money into this business in a building that's currently empty.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard?
If you could have a seat.
If you can all come down front here, if you would, those who plan to speak. I mean, if you just wanna be in opposition, that's just so we recognize you, but those who plan to speak, if you wanna come down, you certainly can come down to the front row here.
My name's Renato Claxton. I live at 3822 North 16th Street. I lived there for almost over fifty years. I seen the neighborhood. I grew up there. There was a liquor store, bar on every corner when I grew up down there. As times changed, things moved, things has really, really moved to the worst and it got better. We had a neighborhood association. We had a lot of shootings. We had a lot of killings. We had a lot of everything. Excuse me, sign is a drain. But we have a liquor store down on 16th and Ford Street, a liquor store, gas station, convenience store. We have a liquor store, convenience store on 16th and Evans Street. We have a grocery store that sells liquor, groceries and everything on 16th and Locust. I see that we don't need no liquor store, convenience store on 16th and Sprague, Commercial Avenue, that is the corner where that's at. And it is a very congested corner, that area there, going towards Carter Lake. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents who wish to be heard?
Good afternoon, council, Brother President. I'm Pastor Gregory C. Ashley, St. John Missionary Baptist.
Brother Pastor, before you get started, I wanted the opponents and those who are opponents that we have, one of our, our Chief of Staff is sending around a, a, a sign-in sheet for your opposition so that the council will have that for the record.
Okay.
Okay, just wanted you to know that.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Pastor. Sorry to interrupt you.
Thank you. Again, good afternoon, Brother President to the City Council. I'm Pastor Gregory C. Ashley, St. John Missionary Baptist Church, 3912 North 16th Street. And I stand in opposition to a liquor store being placed next to our church. This is not my first time at the rodeo. This is not our first experience with this. I've been at this church thirteen years and when I first arrived, there was a bar next to our church. And we knew that it had been approved for liquor license prior to me coming, but we continued to pray and we pretty much prayed them closed. And now it's an empty building. There's been a lot of violence on 16th Street. We have approximately on 16th Street, six other liquor stores within a quarter of a mile. Now, a convenience store with a liquor license, when I grew up, is a liquor store next to our church. One of the things that I want to share with the council, and I know you know and I'm not gonna grandstand, I just wanna tell you that a lady, Ms. Catherine Stewart, you know, she wrote a paper on how alcohol outlets affect neighborhood violence. And this was written by the Pacific Institute. And the thing that's very interesting about that is, in her study, it has been shown that when there's alcohol being sold in outlets in urban communities, violence goes up, crime goes up. I understand that it's within a hundred or two-hundred-and-twenty feet of our property or of our church building, but it's within a hundred-and-fifty feet of our property. We don't want a liquor store there. Violence has decreased since I've become pastor there. We've worked with the neighborhood...
And we knew that it had been approved for liquor license prior to me coming. But we continued to pray, and we pretty much prayed them closed. And now it's an empty building. There's been a lot of violence on Sixteenth Street. We have approximately on Sixteenth Street, six other liquor stores within a quarter of a mile. Now, a convenience store with a liquor license, when I grew up, is a liquor store next to our church. One of the things that I want to share with the council, and I know you know, and I'm not going to grandstand, I just want to tell you that a lady, Ms. Catherine Stewart, you know, she wrote a paper on how alcohol outlets affect neighborhood violence. And this was written by the Pacific Institute. And the thing that's very interesting about that is, in her study, it has been shown that when there's alcohol being sold in outlets in urban communities, violence goes up, crime goes up. I understand that it's within a hundred or two-hundred-and-twenty feet of our property or of our church building, but it's within a hundred and fifty feet of our property. We don't want a liquor store there. Violence has decreased since I've become pastor there. We've worked with the neighborhood association. We work with Mr. Claxton. And we've never even been asked, or there has never been a discussion with us about the liquor store or about a convenience store. We don't want it there. It's not needed there. If you go around the corner and go up another, a few blocks, you have Bill's Package Store. The last thing we need in North Omaha, again, is another liquor store. And a lot of times, people don't understand the effects of liquor and alcohol and the little Swisher cigarettes that they purchase, that they take the tobacco out and put other little special stuff inside in order to smoke. Last but not least, when that bar was next door, every Sunday morning, every Sunday morning, we picked up Hennessy bottles, Cavassier bottles, Crown Royal bottles, beer cans off of our lawn because of transients and people who were frequenting that particular establishment. And then you know what was really depressing for me? Was that when I would go ahead and put the key in the door, someone had urinated in the awning because of the fact that they were inebriated or intoxicated. We don't want to have that experience again. Thank you very much, council.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Let, let me start, let me start off here because this is in my district. And I know that there is a risk that we run, sometimes, Brother Pastor and other members and others who are in opposition, of not, of, of denying an application and having them go to the Liquor Commission and get it anyway. I, I stand ready, just so you all know, because I'm not going to support this liquor license. The reasons are many, but I'm, I'm going to be just brief and say, we have a neighborhood that is, that as you all know, and as Mr. Claxton has pointed out, and Brother Claxton, you, you talked about how far you go back, but your family goes back further than that, you know, so. And we've seen those changes take place. We're in, we're in, we're in a crisis situation in this neighborhood. It is one of the areas of highest poverty. It is across the street from a dump site. It is down the street from several abandoned, empty properties. There have been a number of incidents where there have been shootings and deaths that have occurred in that area. That building, excuse me, that building ought to be, I'm not shooting at anybody, but that building ought, in, in my judgment, that building and several of them next to them ought to be torn down, ought not be renovated, quite frankly. But I don't intend to support this license. I do know that, you know, when the, this application first came up, there were people in, in our council office that, that tried to ask these gentlemen to come talk to me so that you know what my feelings are going to be. I, I never got that call, and I'm not going to complain about that, but I need for you all to understand that there is absolutely no chance that I'm going to support this liquor license. The area is too fragile. The neighborhood is in too much disarray. There is still too many abandoned buildings, lots and places for people to hide. There's still a church and other amenities in that area that are starting to develop and trying to establish neighborhood associations and so forth. And for me, at this point in time, with a neighborhood as fragile as this one is, with the conditions around that proposed liquor establishment being what they are, there's absolutely no chance that I'm going to support that license. And I would encourage my council members to do the same. This is an area, this is akin to, and it is not, and I don't want to be disrespectful to people, but this is akin to supporting some sort of a liquor license for something not nearly as bad as White Clay, but something like that. We cannot support a liquor license in this area at this time. And I want the neighbors and others to understand and to know, and for the applicants to know as well, that I plan to go to Lincoln. If you try to appeal this, I will plan to go to Lincoln and testify personally. Thank you. There are no further lights. Is there a motion? Moving second to deny no lights, roll call.
Harding.
Yes, go ahead. Mr. Jerem.
Yeah. If I could just say this, too. It's one thing to have a council member with, with the advocacy and the passion that Mr. Gray does. It's a whole nother thing for the commission to see the faces and hear the voices from the neighborhood. So when this goes to Lincoln for hearing, I know it's not convenient for the many of you who came here today to go, but I would encourage you to support your, your council member in that process so that the commission understands how important this is to the neighborhood.
Thank you. Roll call.
Harding. Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion to deny approved, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Item seventeen, Bravo Brio Restaurant Group, Inc., doing business as Bravo Cucina Italiana, located at one-seven-one-five-one, Davenport Street. Request permission for an addition of an L-shaped outdoor area approximately eighty-four feet by fifty-six feet to the south and west to the present Class I K liquor license location.
Public hearing on agenda item number seventeen is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon, council. I come to you, I'm Steve Campbell, by the way. I'm the General Manager for Bravo Cucina Italiana at Village Point at one-five-one-five, one-five-one-five-one, one-seven-one-five-one, at Davenport Street, Omaha, Nebraska. I come today, today just to ask for the council to consider for us. I want to just go over a little bit about how we are here today. On June twelfth, twenty-seventeenth, in Nebraska, State Patrol Officer investigated Bravo Cucina Italiana. Upon this investigation, the officer advised the Bravo staff that the premises was not properly licensed because the patio was not officially named in the legal description of the premise. Therefore, the restaurant could no longer serve alcohol beverages in, on the patio. Upon initial review with BBRG, which is our restaurant group, we pulled its original liquor license application filed, filed with the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission. The application illustrated a full-service restaurant, and that included patio service. The business planned on the retail license, liquor license application stated. We will have the inside and outside dining areas for guests. BBRG initially contacted the Nebraska Liquor Commission Control Licensing Department requesting clarification regarding this matter. The facts established the implied desire to license a patio as part of the licensed area. BBRG then asked if they could update the legal language to quickly resolve the issue. The state licensing administration reviewed the original liquor license application and agreed that the patio was implied. However, there was only one way to cure that problem, and that's to file a new application. Okay? BBRG pulled the state application for additional to liquor license for final approval, local governing bodies, and would be responsible for additional inspections, title search and nearby, of nearby property owners and to meet with you today. BBRG has filled all necessary documents, requesting a title search of property, held inspections by local governing bodies. In conclusion, BBRG Omaha location has suffered financial loss to the business due to the issue presented today. The patio service is one of the key elements of the dining experience at Village Point. The business desires to move forward and hopes the council will approve the application for patio service. BBRG will strive to comply with all local governing rules, the state of Kansas, or state of Nebraska, and the city of Omaha.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other, are you, does that finish your testimony?
That is.
Okay. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Mr. Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. Well, it's been a pretty heavy agenda so far today, and I think you're thinking to yourself, oh, my gosh, I have to go after those first...
I know. I'm going away, man.
So I just want to lighten the moment here a little bit and say that we appreciate that explanation of what you're doing here. And clearly, the patio is, was intended for this, and it is a beautiful space. We were there just last weekend for a big fifteenth birthday party, and you guys did a nice job.
Perfect.
We appreciate what you do there.
You drink on the patio, dude.
No tavern reports, I checked. They're doing fine, and we appreciate you being there, and I'd motion to approve.
Moving seconded to approve item seventeen, there are no further lights, roll call.
Harding. Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item seventeen.
I guess you're wishing, you probably should have gone first.
Seventeen approved, seven to zero. Item eighteen, QuickTrip Corporation, doing business as QuickTrip, number five-seven-nine, located at one-seven-zero-four, South Seventy-second Street. Request permission for the reconstruction of their present Class D liquor license location from a one-story building approximately thirty-four feet by a hundred and fifteen feet to a one-story building approximately a hundred and ten feet by fifty-nine-point-one-seven feet.
Public hearing on agenda item number eighteen is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon. Jessica Glovis, QuickTrip Corporation, fifty-seven-twenty-five, Fox Ridge Drive in Mission, Kansas, six-six-two-zero-two. Here on behalf of QuickTrip, we have been operating at this Seventy-second and Hickory location since nineteen ninety-six. We are remodeling our store into our new Generation Three. It's a bigger store, allows for better customer flow, better kitchens, and we'll be selling the same products that we currently sell at the location. We actually believe the security is better on the products than we even had before. We have a very good focus on responsible retailing, which I'd be happy to answer questions on if you have any, and we appreciate your consideration to let us move forward and continue operating at this site.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moving seconded to approve item eighteen, no lights, roll call.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item eighteen approved, seven to zero. Item nineteen, a request to appoint Alan J. Walker as manager of Six-Four Fun LLC, doing business as The Amazing Pizza Machine for their Class I liquor license located at one-three-seven-five-five-S Plaza.
Public hearing on agenda item number nineteen is today. Proponents, please.
Hi, Alan Walker, appearing on behalf of myself. Congratulations on the pronunciation. Nobody gets that right, so thank you for that. There is a correction, it's one-three-nine-five-five, it's nine-five-five-S Plaza in the agenda, but here to assume the duties of the manager of record. My former colleague is moved on, and I've been with the business since we've opened and been involved in all of the operational aspects of the business, and we're excited to continue as a world-class destination here in Omaha and with me leading that charge. So happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moving seconded to approve item nineteen, no lights, roll call.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item nineteen approved, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Item twenty, a request to approve special designated liquor license applications for Septemberfest, Salute to Labor, Inc., six-nine-one-zero, Pacific Street, Suite four-fifty, for Septemberfest at Century Link, four-five-five, North Tenth Street, Lot D, on September one, twenty-seventeen, from five p.m. to midnight, and September second through the fourth, twenty-seventeen, from noon to midnight, with music until midnight each night.
Public hearing on agenda item number twenty is today. Proponents, please. And I know the proponent is not going to be here. She's already contacted me, and, and we all kind, I think we all kind of know the deal with her. Are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moving seconded to approve item twenty, no lights, roll call.
Harding. Yes. Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item twenty approved, seven to zero. Consent agenda. Any member of the City Council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the City Council immediately following the consent agenda in the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by the City Council Rules of Order.
The public hearings on agenda items numbers twenty-one through twenty-six were held on July eighteenth, twenty, twenty-seventeen. Moving seconded to approve, no further lights, roll call.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Items twenty-one through twenty-six approved, seven to zero.
The public hearing on agenda items numbers twenty-seven through forty are today. If you wish to address the City Council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by your name, address, who you represent, and if you are a proponent or an opponent. Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moving seconded to approve items twenty-seven through forty, no lights, roll call.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Items twenty-seven through forty approved, seven to zero. Item forty-one, a resolution to approve the policy for maintenance of roadways within the city of Omaha as a replacement to all previous city policies regarding roadway maintenance. This item was held over from the July eleventh, twenty-seventeen, City Council meeting. A is an amendment requested by the Public Works Department, and B are four amendments requested by Councilmember Jerem.
Thank you. We've already had discussion on these items. Mr. Jerem.
Yes, I would move to amend Amendment A by substituting for the diameter of forty-two inches, I would substitute twenty-four inches, which is contained in the first of the four amendments in B. So take, take the first one from B and amend the amendment A.
So this would be an amendment to the amendment?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so moving seconded to amend item A, am I right?
Correct.
Amend item A with, with the amendment to the amendment. That would substitute the size pipe from forty-two to twenty-four?
Yes.
Okay. And it's been seconded. Ms. Melton.
I'll defer to Mr. Harding.
Mr. Harding.
I was just going to ask, the, the reasoning for the twenty-four, I mean, I understand you want to go smaller than the forty-two, but walk me through the decision to twenty-four if you could.
Well, as I view all of the ones in B, they're, they're mostly for what I think is a more equitable way to address the cost sharing. When you get into the size of the piping, I believe, when you get larger than twenty-four, in my view, and speaking with a couple of major general contractors in the city, you get into drainage issues that benefit much more than, than the street typically, or the block of the street, or two blocks of the street that are being improved. So when you have a broader community benefit, to me, it seems unfair to have the people on that narrow area in the street improvement district pay for something that benefits draining the whole area.
I, I had some similar conversations, too. I, I thought that's where, when I first saw the amendment, where I thought you were going with that. If, if I, I agree with the concept or the, the idea where you're trying to go with that. I, I think maybe, at least in my conversations, that if you went to something like thirty-six, would you take a friendly amendment to a thirty-six?
Is that a substitute motion?
It is.
I guess I'd have to live with a substitute motion. My preference would be twenty-four inches, because I think that's more fair. But I, I sense you've maybe have a, a sense of what might be more preferable. I wouldn't view it as hostile. Let me just say that.
That's good. Remember, we're...
But it isn't the twenty-four inches.
So you're making a substitute motion?
I did.
Okay, is there a second? Is there a second for this substitute motion?
Yes, second. Oh, second that, but I still have, I guess procedurally I have a question, but I got my line on after Mr. Harding.
Okay, all right. So there's a substitute motion to, for thirty-six instead of twenty-four, is that accurate?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. So, there's a substitute motion on the floor, Mr. Festerson.
Thanks, I just wanted to ask a question about the substitute motion as it applies to the complicated case we talked about two weeks ago and is also still on the agenda here, which is Ridgewood. Does moving to thirty-six versus twenty-four impact that discussion? I guess I'm asking either Mr. Jerem or Mr.-
If you're asking me, they haven't had engineering designs yet done, they have estimates. So, we don't know for sure what the engineer's proposed solution will be. And I see Todd Fitzher, the city engineer, nodding his head yes.
Todd, you want to confirm that for the record?
Todd Fitzher, Public Works. Councilman Jerem is correct, we have not done the final design on that, so we haven't sized those yet, so I can't answer with regard to that specific project.
My view, Mr. Festerson, is given the eighty-some acre drainage basin that those two blocks will handle, I would be surprised if an engineer recommended a pipe smaller than that.
Senator?
The engineering has not been done, so I cannot comment on that.
So, chances are it does not impact it, I guess is what I'm looking for. I just want to make sure we're not getting back and tangled up with the issue we were talking about two weeks ago for that neighborhood.
I just can't intelligently answer that right now, as the engineering's not been done, I can apprise you as soon as we get to that point, but I don't have that information from you.
Okay.
Mr. Pauls.
Thank you. What I find quite interesting, this morning we had this dialogue, and be honest with you, the size of the pipe, I have no knowledge, so I'm not arguing for twenty-four, thirty-six, one hundred and forty, I don't know. But I would think with all of the experts we had in this morning discussion, that something like this would not have been brought up. That's why I value the discussion that most of the people do not hear in the morning. When do we ask somebody, "Help us out, because we're struggling with this," and I don't get any help, but all of a sudden in the afternoon, somebody says, "What about thirty-six?" And you, so, you know, you say, "Okay." It seems like somewhere along the line, over the noon hour, something happens, and it just is, to me, it just, you know, all for the want of the size of a pipe. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Melton.
Well, I guess, and I'm just reading this, and I guess my question would be, in requiring this city, I like requiring the city to provide written notice to property owners, abutting any portion of the unimproved street classifications with the pacer inspection.
That's the next, we're not there yet, this is not-
Okay, well, that was, okay, so my procedural question was, are we gonna vote on each one separately?
B one has been removed-
Okay.
-and formed as an amendment to the Amendment A.
And that was when I said I proceed, that was my question, so-
B two, three, and four will be handled next as amendment proposals to the policy and be voted on separately.
And so, A, as amended by Public Works, we're voting on that and then adding each one of B's items individually. Is that correct?
No.
There's the policy, which is item number forty-one.
Right.
Forty-one A is Public Works' amendment request to their own recommended policy.
Okay.
B one is being removed from B and proposing to amend Amendment A to the policy.
Okay.
If this passes in whatever form, we have-
See, do you see my procedural?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
B two, three, and four will come next and each get a vote on separately.
Yeah, but my question is, is A just a given? We're, like, we're voting on A because you're adding B one to A?
It's an amendment on an amendment. So, you're voting on B one, if that fails, you'll still vote on A, either as amended or as is.
Okay, yeah.
And there's a substitute motion to-
Well, I mean, I guess procedurally, shouldn't we just pass A and then vote on each of the, each of the B numbers?
No, because B one conflicts with A, so it has to have an amendment to an amendment. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
My question is gonna be, are we going to, in the end, are we gonna accomplish having the amendments that were requested by Public Works passed? And then, we may or may not have each one of the sub Bs.
Correct.
Okay, that's my question, I just want to make sure that we're actually doing what we are intending to do. Mr. Kratz, will you make sure we're doing that?
I'll try.
Okay, so there's a substitute amendment for a thirty-six inch pipe instead of a twenty-four inch pipe, and that's the only change to B one, correct? That would be the only change to-
B one is the only proposed amendment to Amendment A.
To Amendment A.
Yeah.
And so, and you got a substitute motion that would increase the size of the pipe, simply.
And there was a second.
And there was a second for that. Okay, no, Mr. Jerem.
No, I'm-
Oh, you're, okay.
It's just in the queue.
Okay. There's no further lights, roll call.
Harding, Jerem, Melton, Pauls, Palermo, Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
The amendment to the amendment for forty-one A is approved, seven to zero. So, now we need to vote on forty-one A as amended.
Forty-one A.
What happens to-
Three movers, no seconds.
Please.
Second.
Okay, so we've done-
Motion and a second?
There's a motion, is there a motion?
Well, yes, so, voting to amend.
And then Festerson, second.
To-
On the amendment of A.
Okay. To approve, approve A as amended. Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been approved, there's motion and a second to approve forty-one A as amended, Mr. Harding. I'm sorry, Mr. Jerem, Mr. Jerem.
No, I didn't.
Okay, Mr. Harding.
I know we've kind of been through this a few times, but I just wanted to make sure that the vote I do today is not my final action on the streets policy that we're considering, and I just wanted to go on the record as saying that and knowing, I've said it many times, that this isn't something that has popped up overnight and it's not gonna be solved overnight. And I appreciate the current administration for taking on this subject, but, you know, the current policy for the city and the county is a hundred percent of the property owner's responsibility. So, regardless of what I do today, if this passes, or if this doesn't pass, it stays a hundred percent on the property owner. It goes back to the, as it would with the county, so. It's, I'm glad we're doing this by policy and by resolution rather than by ordinance, because I think it'll make the policy something that can be worked with more easily going forward to make any amendments or changes to that. And I want to make it clear that I'm gonna be working in that regard as it relates to a number, because there are more lane miles of roads that might be considered in this condition in my district, and I want to make sure that all know that I'll be working in making this policy better, assuming it goes forward. I also want to make it clear, I think there's some confusion out there that this is, that the city is mandating the change of the nature of the road in front of one's house. If you have asphalt and you want to keep it asphalt, you can certainly do that, there'd be a different cost sharing. If you want to, if you're asphalt and you want to change it, you certainly have that option as well. But if your road will still be maintained, as long as it's above a certain pacer level, as I've been informed by the, by Public Works, and I know that there's some concerns of Greenbrier and Skyline and some of those areas, and I've also been informed, I believe, that most of those are certain, or all of those are certainly in a current condition that they will still be maintained by the city going forward. When they do reach a level that's less than whatever that pacer level is, that's when the city would be giving that notification. But, again, I'm gonna be working, before they start getting those notifications, I'm gonna be working with the city and with those property owners to find a way to make this policy even better. Again, I applaud the administration for taking the step to make this more of a cost-sharing or equitable policy, but I still think it needs, or has some ways to go, and I'll be working in that regard. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jerem.
Yes, Madam Clerk, are we now past the Amendment A and onto the B?
No, we still need to vote on-
That's why my light was on, so.
Oh.
I'm waiting for B.
You're waiting, okay. So, we got a motion and a second for, to, okay.
Vote on A as amended.
Vote on A as amended, no further lights, roll call.
Harding, Jerem, Melton, Pauls, Palermo, Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item approved, six to one. Now we are on to B.
Okay. Item, what is now the first item in B, which was formerly B two, it would insert language that when the Public Works Department did one of these inspections on an unimproved or substandard street and decided this, the pazer rating, as we've been hearing about, was at a level where the city was going to cease maintaining the road, it would require Public Works to notify the property owners abutting such street of the score, that the inspection had occurred, the score, the date when the city would discontinue maintenance and provide property owners with notice of the opportunity to appeal such determination to the Administrative Board of Appeals, who, after hearing, would, and the opportunity to present evidence in their own case, by both the city and the affected property owners will decide whether to affirm, modify, or reverse such determination by Public Works. To me, this is done in terms of respecting the democratic society that we live in and respecting the traditional notions of due process. When citizens feel aggrieved by an action of the government, it gives them an opportunity for due process to appeal and have their day in court, so to speak, and the Administrative Board of Appeals is the board, which I would call the cleanup board, because they handle the general catch-all appeal issues for city determinations that are not covered by the other boards. So, I would move that amendment.
Second. Do you have no further lights, roll call?
Harding, Jerem, Melton, Pauls, Palermo, Festerson.
No.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item approved, four to three.
Next is, would add a new section to C. This would give citizens who live in areas of the city, who have been annexed and who have lived on a street that the city designates as non-standard, the opportunity to, in the case where the city did the notice that they've done a pazer score and that they were going to discontinue maintenance, it would give the people the opportunity to present evidence that their street did meet the applicable standard of the then municipality at the time that their SID and annexed area was constructed. For the record, I've discussed at Public Works Committee this morning, it is the view of Public Works that this is a pretty high threshold, because they've searched in vain the records of the city for the annexed areas and they cannot locate records that annexed streets did meet another standard at the time, but I think in the, along the spirit of two B that we just passed, this would give the citizens the opportunity to present evidence regarding the then existing standard that their street was constructed by. So, I would move to C.
To C. Second. Ms. Melton.
I have a question for Mr. Kratz. This language just seems very vague to me, and I understand the point, Councilman Jerem, but I think that just saying the standard of the applicable government entity at the time it was created, I don't, I guess I don't actually know what that means, I mean, Mr. Kratz, can you, can you help me? So, if there's gonna be an argument, what do you have to prove? What's the burden? I mean, what do you need to show that? Because the language, to me, is vague.
Paul Kratz, City Attorney. I would agree, it probably is vague, I'm not sure how else you could word it to make it clearer, but I think you would have to show some type of document that indicated what the street standards were at the time of annexation. Presumably, that would be an ordinance somewhere or a policy somewhere from one of the annexed areas, but simply a statement that this was the standard at the time of annexation isn't sufficient, you'd have to have a written document somewhere to prove that.
And do you think that this language satisfies, I mean, I understand that it's vague, I guess I'm just-
I think along with the statements that Mr. Jerem made, who's introduced her the discussion here, we'll clarify that if there is any issue in the future.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Pauls.
Thank you, Mr. Jerem. Just want a little bit of concrete idea here. Okay, I'm glad I got your attention. Let's say that I happen to be annexed thirty years ago, and this, my roads have been told to me that these are not adequate anymore. It will be my responsibility as the homeowner or the whoever lives in that area to prove somewhere along the line that I'll have to dig up the history to satisfy this, what you're putting forth. The city will not have to do discovery, it will be me, the individual.
Yes, because the city at that point had already made the determination that it did not meet their standard.
Okay, but all I had to prove a long time ago, I'll have to go find some records, and it's pretty vague is what you're telling me.
It's pretty difficult. I don't think vague, that you give someone the opportunity to have their day in court and present their evidence.
Okay.
But difficult, yes.
Okay, so, basically, I will have to be doing all the work as the-
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Harding.
Just a question.
Mr. Jerem.
Yes.
When you're saying on a non-standard improvement, you're, can you, I want to make sure I'm clear on your definition of that, please.
It would be unimproved or a road that the city declared did not meet the then applicable city standard.
But, okay, but it is, when you then say despite the pazer score, I believe it's a pazer of one or two, Mr. Stube?
Bob Stube, Public Works. Yeah, the pazer ratings go from one to ten, and typically, when we consider a pazer rating of one or two, that would be determined as being probably non-serviceable. Anything above that would continue to be maintained.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Melton.
Leads me to another question. So, is this one, does this one go to the Administrative Board of Appeals?
Yes.
It goes back to the Administrative Board of Appeals?
Right, it gets, it expands on the B.
So, Administrative Board of Appeals would determine if there was documentation?
Right, because we just passed-
Right.
-the amendment that gives that right, and this is triggered by that.
Well, but I think what we just passed, that was about appealing your actual pazer rating.
Right, and this builds upon-
This is different. This is saying regardless of the pazer rating, they could appeal whether their street is standard or substandard, so I think those are two completely, in my opinion, two completely different issues.
My intent has, when drafting this, was to expand on B and have the ABA be the place where this would be heard.
Either one.
And for the record, I was home doing laundry, Mr. Paul, sorry, over the lunch hour, I was not meeting with other council members.
Then I, my next question-
I had a turkey sandwich along the way.
I'm just looking for the podcast.
Okay, my next question, excuse me. Administrative Board of Appeals, Mr. Kratz, is that where that, do you believe that that's, that is the appropriate place for this appeal? I mean, maybe a pazer rating, but if you're appealing whether or not, is the Administrative Board of Appeals the proper place for that?
Paul Kratz, City Attorney, would be the proper place if, and there probably is some confusion on section two C as to whether or not that can be appealed. I think if Mr. Jerem wants to add some language that it can be appealed to, that decision can be appealed to the Administrative Board of Appeals, that'd be appropriate.
Yeah, because it doesn't indicate here, and I understand, it says expanding upon the above, but really, that's not expanding upon the above, you're doing something, you're giving completely different issue, you're giving somebody the ability to appeal, unless, Councilman Jerem, is that, do you have to have a low pazer rating first in order to do that? It seems to me that you're just letting anybody- It seems to me that you're just letting anybody appeal whether or not they have a substandard, unimproved street, right?
Right. The, again, my intent was in two C, that what would trigger the appeal would be in cases where the city, in a case where they were, the substandard or unimproved street had been, in a part of the city that had been annexed, that, for example, Mr. Peterson, his case, where he came and said, my, my street met the standard of Elkhorn at the time that we were annexed. So Public Works in that case went out and sent the letter under two B. Your Pazer rating is now at a level where the city intends to cease maintaining your road. Under two B, they'd have a right to appeal the rating. Under two C, they'd have the right to present evidence that we met the standard when annexed and present that case to the ABA.
And I guess, so my question would be, though, what if I live on an unimproved, substandard street that's still at a Pazer rating of about four, so they're still maybe coming and patching, it hasn't gotten to that point yet? Can you not appeal until you get to that point?
Well, there's no...
Because maybe somebody believes, I live on a substandard street, and I think it should...
The right to appeal is invoked when you get the notice from the city that we're, that the city is no longer going to maintain your street. If the, if the city is continuing to maintain your street, then there's no reason to appeal anything.
So you have to wait until the city says they're not gonna do it?
Right. That's the intent.
But I mean, I think some streets are, you know, when they're just getting patched, the city's still maintaining. When you're at a three or four, but it's still a bad street to where maybe if you weren't a substandard or unimproved, you'd be asking the city to get on the resurface list. Do you see, do you see where I'm going? That you have to actually wait to get the Pazer rating?
Because there will come a point, as the Public Works, as a part of their residential street resurfacing program is carried out every year, they have the inspectors that go out into the neighborhoods and they assess the streets and they score the streets as to whether they qualify because of their condition for resurfacing as opposed to patching.
Right.
At the point where they say, this street's so bad, we're going to resurface in a street that is not substandard or unimproved, they just, it gets put into the hopper and gets on the list and it's eventually done. In case where the, the maintenance ceases, then that would be an unimproved or substandard street, and the notice would go out, and then that would trigger this whole process, if you were once annexed.
Okay. I like, I like the intent. Just not sure we get there. Thank you for your work, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to approve item two, I mean, item B, three?
The amendment to two C.
Amendment to two C. Mr. Harding.
I'm asking for lots of friendly amendments today, but would you consider laying this one over? Would you take a friendly amendment to lay this one over?
Yes, I would. I'll withdraw the motion on two C.
That's all right.
Okay.
Good luck, John.
But the subs, the second has to withdraw too.
I'll withdraw the second.
All right, moving on to the last one. This...
We have to run a motion later, man?
No, I just, I just withdrew it.
He just withdrew it.
Yeah. The, we'll, we'll come back when we have a chance as a committee to refine that one. The next amendment is to the section that provides additional cost share opportunity and follows the area of high poverty areas by creating an extraordinary circumstances component to obtain additional relief. And basically, if the petitioners of a proposed street improvement district believe that they have circumstances, whether they be topographical, economic, other, it gives the petitioners the opportunity to seek additional reduction in their 50% cost share if they demonstrate that extraordinary circumstances exist justifying such a reduction. Any such request will require a presentation, public hearing, and approval, majority of the city council, and the additional reduction is proposed to grant an additional 25%, so that would add 10% more on to the two categories above it for a maximum of 75-25 cost share. So, and I would move that.
Second, for purposes of discussion, I will be supporting this, but I, like, Mr. Palermo, I was almost a no vote with you, because I, there are, there are pockets in, in my district, and I know in yours, and probably some others, where, you know, we just have, we have people on such fixed incomes and such limited houses on some of the streets that are improved, are unimproved, that it, there's no, there's no way they could even do the 25%. But I would be supportive of this, just to, to, so that we can have a place to start. But I like, Mr. Harding, intend to continue looking at this, because, you know, we've got to find a way to help those who are, who simply, you know, not only can afford the 25%, but couldn't afford 20% over that, because they're on fixed incomes or whatever. But I would, I would be supportive of this. So it's been moved and seconded to support two C. There are no further lights? Oh, Mr. Pauls.
You know, the, the concept, I find hard to argue against, but I'm just, I'm trying to find where, where are we gonna find the dollars? That's, you know, if this does, if this would happen, this could really be overwhelming. That's, that's where I'm having a little bit of an issue with.
That's one side of the spectrum. The other side of the spectrum is that we've got people that can't do it anyway, so.
Yeah.
I don't...
So you're basically...
Or not willing to do it, so.
So you're basically saying, if I, I can't afford it, but you're going to make it maybe a little bit more attractive for me to try to find the money? I mean, as the individual, because...
There is no chance that some, some of the people that I've dealt with are ever going to find the money, Mr. Pauls.
And I, and I understand.
Just to be honest with you.
No, and I understand that. Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. But I'm supporting it, you know, simply as a place to start, but I like, Mr. Harding, I, I think we've got more work to do. And I think we've got, and, Mr. Pauls, I don't think that your, I don't, I don't think that your argument is out of line. It, it is going to be, it's, it's gonna be a pretty good cost if we do this. But for us, it's going to be, for someone in, in the district that I represent, it's going to be almost impossible for them to even do the 25%.
Thank you.
Mr. Harding.
Thank you. Mr. Pauls, I think, brings up a, a good point that I wanted to also approach, and that's making sure that as we're moving along and making some of these changes or proposing some of these changes, I think we should have a better understanding what financial impact that might have, as well as time. Because we know if we have a limited amount of dollars, and if there's differences in how these are taken care of, it certainly could add some time to the amount of road miles or lane miles we get done on, on improving these. The other thing is too, is that, and I talked about this a little earlier, that, you know, this, this is a policy, we're doing this by resolution, not by ordinance. We have flexibility in, in that plan. And as, as this was adopted as, what number was it? As, let's see, forty-one A, as amended, that's, that's, we still have the, the flexibility within this plan to make the, make these changes. So I, I'm not sure that the language for, for the amendment that's, that's under discussion right now is actually needed. So I think I'd probably be voting no on this, just because I think we still have the flexibility within the document that we earlier passed of forty-one A. Okay.
Ms. Melton.
Well, and I guess my concern is, in the original A, we'll call it, they, you know, under five B, there's additional consideration for low-income neighborhoods. So in a census tract where 30% or greater of the households are below the poverty level, they get an additional 15% reduction, meaning the city will contribute 65%. Well, now we're creating a third category that's giving somebody 75%, but yet, people that are in the highest poverty level aren't getting that. So I think we're creating an exception that we could grant to people who are well above. I mean, do, do you see what I'm saying? Like...
I understand what you're saying, I, I just...
I mean, I almost think, why, if we would give this extraordinary circumstance to, I don't know, some, we haven't given an example of what that would be. I think maybe one was shared earlier. We're gonna give somebody a 75% share, but we're not gonna give people in census tracts where there's 30% poverty or above 75%? We're only giving them 65?
If, if...
Do you see, I mean, do you see where I'm going with that?
If you don't, yeah, but that's only, my understanding now, and I could be wrong, but my understanding is, that's only if you don't approve three C. Because in item A, where you're talking, the, the threshold for involvement is only, is 65% instead of 75%. Is that accurate? That's where you are, right?
Right.
Okay, so it'd only be 65%, and what Mr. Jerem is talking about is an additional 10% for high-poverty areas.
So are we, is that what we're actually amending?
Yes, for high-poverty areas.
But this says creating a third category. So that's, what you're doing is you're creating a category where...
You're reading from Jim's email, though.
Oh, well. Well, I mean, so, I mean, are we doing that just as flat for everybody? I guess, I'm just confused as to who the amendment applies to.
If you're asking me a question...
Let me ask, let me ask.
I don't care who answers it.
Yeah, okay. The, the purpose in C is not to make it exclusive to other avenues to try to obtain assistance at the levels offered. So two C, if you, say, qualified under two A, say you were high-poverty area and you wanted to get relief, but you also happen to live on a hill with no properties that abut the street, they all face other directions or other streets, perhaps there are other conditions that maybe of the six properties, there's three that are abandoned, neglected. I mean, those would be examples of an extraordinary circumstance where you came to Public Works under two A, but you say, we also seek two C relief for an additional 10%. So 75-25 is what they want. But it's not, C is not in any way based upon what's in, it's in A, it's in addition to, so it's, it's without regard to poverty. That could be one of the elements that qualifies, but it's not the only.
Well, I guess my point would be, I think that, in my opinion, then, it should be the same as what we're giving to the poverty. I mean, I, I think the percentages should be the same as what's in...
Well, it's my intent to have it be an additional relief, whether you qualify for poverty or not. So say, say you had unusual circumstances, you could, you could ask for...
It's a third category.
It's a third category.
But it just seems to me that we would be giving more to somebody that's not poverty than what we're giving to people in poverty.
Well, I, I think the other thing that Mr. Jerem is talking about as well, is that if you live on a, if you live on a house, if you live on a, if you live on a street that's on a hill, there's no other property that abuts that, and you want to get the road improved, and there's only one property that abuts that street, it will give them an additional 10% because they're the only one on the street that abuts that property.
So I guess, though, at least with A and B, they, it's specific. I mean, it gives a census tract, it shows how you qualify. Then we just kind of give a catch-all C where anybody can just come in, and we didn't set up any policies for that. Like, what is an extraordinary circumstance? When are we gonna do it and not do it? Because otherwise, we're gonna do it for one, and again, just, you know, like this council does, once you do it for one, you're gonna have to do it for everybody else, or else you're just kind of picking and choosing. So I, again, I, I understand the intent, I'm just not sure that...
Okay, let me get some more to say. Mr. Pauls.
That works.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, believe it or not, I really relish what we're doing now. We're having a dialogue, we're trying to, I think we're struggling to make this a better concept, which I think we ought to do, because so many times, if you can recall, the administration gives us something and we really say yea or nay. Now we're trying to make, in our estimation, a better document or a better way of doing things, and I think the more and more we discuss this, the more the public will, will find out that we are really trying to make this work. So I do commend you, Councilman Jerem, for putting us through this rigorous procedure of amendment upon amendment. Try and be a little humorous there, but I, I do think this is causing us to do some more deep thinking. Thank you.
Thank you. There are no further lights? Is there a motion?
There is.
Oh, it's been moved and seconded? Okay. Did I second it? Okay, good. It's been a while. It's been moved and seconded to approve item two C, three C?
It's the third, it's the last one in B.
Last one in B. It's been moved and seconded to approve, but there are no further lights, roll call.
Harding.
No.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
No.
Pauls.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item passed, four to three.
As amended.
As amended, yes.
Second. No lights, roll call. I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. I wanted to wait, so we got, kind of got through those amendments, most of which were approved, not all of which, and some of which I have, I supported and some of which I didn't, but I just want to echo some of the comments that I've made today, too, that I think these amendments have improved some of the concerns I was talking about a couple weeks ago, and that many of us had, as it applies to equity and distribution of this policy, and the use of it in poverty areas, that concerns me greatly, as well as long-term maintenance. But I do think with the amendments, we're taking a step in the right direction to, to address a very large problem. But as Mr. Harding pointed out, I think in practice, once this does begin to be a policy in practice, there will undoubtedly be, need to be alterations going forward, not the least of which is the funding portion of this, because let's not lose sight and think that by passing a policy today, that this is gonna get us on our way, because this is a $300 million issue, for which we have $1.8 million budgeted for next year, and most of that is already spent. So this is just the beginning, I think, in terms of trying to address a very large unimproved street situation throughout our city, but at least it is a beginning. One last question, I think, from Mr. Fitz, or from my folks in Florence, who are, who are watching and following this conversation closely. We talked about this this morning, but I just want to confirm it one more time before we have a vote here, it seems. So I would say the most unimproved roads in my district are in the Florence area. Almost all of them are considered granular streets, granular unimproved streets at this point, as it applies to those in this overall policy and with these amendments. For them, there is no change, there's nothing they have to do. They could seek to be an asphalt, RMD, or a concrete SID like anybody else, but if you're a granular street, you're still eligible in perpetuity for the grading two times a year, right?
Todd Fitz, Public Works, that is correct.
Serviceable life concept, in other words, does not apply.
That is correct.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Mr. President.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to approve, the item forty-one is amended. No further lights, roll call.
Harding.
I'm sorry, I want to be, I need some more... Please, please inform me, is that exactly what we are voting on?
This is forty-one as amended, with all amendments.
Forty-one A?
This is all amendments.
All amendments wrapped into what, we, we already approved forty-one A, and so after these amendments...
and so, after these amendments, we are amending forty-one A?
It's, yeah, it's forty-one, it's the policy with all the amendments already voted on that were approved.
All the amendments, I thought we were just voting on, as amended, 'cause you just passed one, two, three, four.
Yep.
Okay, then, I thought it was just on that fourth one.
That one was the one we just voted on. Yep, so this is the main vote, yep, this will be forty-one with all amendments.
With all the amendments. Okay, so, prior to my, can I make a comment then, before my vote then? So, I'll kinda reiterate what I said earlier about, you know, obviously, obviously, there needs to be some action and some movement forward on this policy, and I applaud the administration for doing so. It's evident and obvious, I think, to all of us here in the, on the council, the audience in listening, that this is not certainly a perfect policy, and it needs a lot of work still. Not taking any action, or the action we take on this today, if the, if the answer is no, we go back to the policy of a hundred percent on the property owners. If we vote yes, then we take this, we take this policy forward. If the vote is, with, with the amendments, even though, if I voted against the amendments, I don't think in good conscience, then, I can vote for the policy with those amendments that were approved against what I voted for. But I also find myself in that position, that I wanna make sure that, that we make some progress on this, or if we are to make some progress on this, that I might have to do that. The other, the advantage of doing that, too, then, is that I can, if I'm voting on the prevailing side, I can always vote for reconsideration. But now, I have a question for law. So, Mr. Kratz, help me out. I don't believe the mayor would have a line-item veto on what we passed today. Is that correct?
Paul Kratz, City Attorney, that's correct. She has a line-item veto on the budget issues, but not on a piece of legislation.
Mr. Harding, if it helps, if it helps, and I don't know that it does, but if it helps, I'm sitting here looking at this resolution, and I'm saying to myself, what benefit is it, and what benefit is there in this for my district? And if I were just looking at my district, I would say, I don't see a benefit to this. Because the ones, the roads that are going to get done are going to get done anyway. The ones that aren't, in a lot of areas, they're not gonna be able to support a dime, let alone twenty-five percent. So, there's nothing legitimately that's in this, as I can see it, just on the surface, for my district, per se. But I think, but I agree with you to the extent that we get something done, recognizing that it's not perfect, recognizing that we have a long way to go, but recognizing that the administration has put forth something in an effort to help us get through this long-term issue that we're going to have. So, for me...
I think, I think you've said what, kinda what I said as well.
All right, yeah, so I...
I understand. And that's, that's what I, that's the same dilemma that I was trying to express. So, we're on the vote, then?
Yes. But we've got a few other lights on.
Okay.
But we did, we did, we did get it moved and seconded. But I, but I, I understand your argument, and from, from another perspective, I think our, our issues are kinda the same.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Mr. Jerram.
Yes. As imperfect as we've all pointed out in different respects the policy is, and we've acknowledged that, I think we've all acknowledged that it is a first step. And then, using baseball as the metaphor, you know, if you're in the dugout, you're no good to your team. If you're on first base, or you get to first base, you have an opportunity to advance to second, third, and home and score. And ultimately, in the long run, over nine innings or longer, you can win the game. If this doesn't pass today, though, Mr. Kratz, the six street improvement district proposals that were under the, or combination last week that were, that were voted on, approved, they go down, too, don't they, under the cost share?
I, Paul Kratz, City Attorney, I don't believe so.
Okay. So, if, if this goes down today, though, someone on the prevailing side could bring those back. You could do, you could, Madam Clerk, is that correct?
Correct, for reconsideration.
You're talking about the other, the other policy, that was...
No, not another policy.
This one?
The fifty percent cost shares that were approved at the last meeting.
Well, that one, you're asking if that can be reconsidered at some point. Like any other piece of legislation, it could be reconsidered.
Right. Correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Pauls.
I love these clarifications. Okay, if we vote this down, we start over.
Pretty much.
I mean, we go back to, as...
Hundred percent cost share.
As you, as you said, no, that we start over.
Yeah, we go back to a hundred percent cost share.
Hundred percent cost.
The residents pay the whole cost.
Okay, so, we have to accept the imperfections as is, or go back to basically starting the ballgame over, talking about baseball. Thank you.
There are no further lights. It's been moved and seconded to approve item forty-one as amended. Roll call. I'm sorry, I didn't see your light. Okay, I saw, you had it on?
Yes. If I could, just one second. Especially with my, with my opening, I am actually glad that we were able to reach an agreement. And sometimes, getting to where you wanna go takes compromise. And we need to do that here. And I understand where you're coming from, President Gray, because you're saying this doesn't help me at all. That doesn't mean, though, that I'm not gonna pass it so that constituents in Mr. Harding's district, who want to pay for half of their room to get fixed, can do that.
Yes.
So, I, I mean, I actually appreciate the fact that you're willing to not say, "Well, if it doesn't help my district, then I'm not, then I don't care." So, I really appreciate the reaching out, prior to Councilman Jerram threatening to stop some road things in the future. I really was gonna compliment you until that came out.
It was a parliamentary inquiry.
Anyway, I, I, actually, I don't believe you would, you would really do that, Mr. Jerram. But I, I think that this is, this is important, that we get this done. So, although not everything on here is exactly the way I think any of us want it right now. I think it was gotten there by some compromise. I appreciate Councilman Jerram's work on this. And so, although it didn't get my way on everything, I'm not gonna, I'm not just gonna throw the, not gonna throw the baby out with the bathwater, right? I'm not gonna throw the whole thing out after the amount of work that was not only done by the Public Works Department, but I, I think we need to recognize that committee, Senator McCollister, Dr. Thompson, who has spent years working on this, really. But a lot of work went into that with constituents, residents, who want this and wanna start forming these. So, I think we owe it to them to get this passed today, even if it's not perfect. So, I, with that, that would be the reason why I'll make sure I'm voting for it. Thank you.
Thank you. There are no further lights. It's been moved and seconded to approve item forty-one as amended. Roll call.
Harding. Jerram.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Paul. Palermo. Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
I understand your dilemma, Mr. Harding, but yes.
Item forty-one as amended is approved, six to one. Item forty-two, a resolution to approve a clarification that Street Improvement District Number Six Eight Eight One, located on Bridgewood Avenue from Hickory Street to Poppleton Avenue, shall be subject to the city's new policy.
Public hearing on agenda, item number forty-two is today. Proponents, please.
Hello, everyone. Good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Ryan Palmer. I live at thirteen twenty-six Bridgewood Avenue. I've been here a couple of times before. First, I wanna say, way to go on deciding to move forward with the policy and make adj, make adjustments as needed. I think that the city needed it and deserved an answer. And I'm confident that you seven capable individuals can figure out the right answer for complications that may arise from the policy in the future. Also, thank you for doing this work. It's not an easy job to report to thousands of citizens about what they want and what's important to them. And I commend you for taking on the role of sitting in that chair every week and making decisions that are gonna benefit the rest of the city to the best that you can. And so, with that said, I sent an email out yesterday to each of you, and I realize you're all very busy and may not have even had a chance to digest it or even read it. We also sent out a memo on behalf of our SID via certified mail. And I, just as a courtesy, I brought copies of each of those.
Thank you.
And I've got, I've got enough so that you could even take one and pass one down. There's two documents. The first one is a copy of the memo that you should've all received via certified mail in late June. And the other one is a copy of the email that I sent directly to your email last night. And this might help kinda answer some of the questions that were, were holding you up on the amendments or in the discussion.
Do you keep this one?
So, I'd encourage you to at least get your hands on those.
I don't know, we'll see.
And I have a few more handouts as they become more relevant. But that memo that we sent out on twenty, on the June twenty-fourth by certified mail, it provides general background on, on why Bridgewood Avenue is different. And I'll tell you, from my research and driving around on the unimproved streets, it's probably the most expensive project that you're gonna have to make a decision about. We basically provided a laundry list in the addendum to that memo of the reasons that justify the use of public funds. Because we understand it's been, it's been the homeowner's obligation to improve these streets for a long, long time. And I just wanna point out, I'm also supposed to hand you a copy of my testimony, too, here. I just wanna point out that, that our street was part of an area that was annexed by Omaha a long time ago. In fact, before city street standards were even created. And so, if we were, we were considered Omaha when those standards were created, but Omaha has passed the buck on the opportunity to improve that street, despite its massive public value. To me, it's, it's hard to look at the paradigm as a reduction in cost share, because the whole reason this street's never been done is because most of the people think this is a public corridor, and this is a public issue. If you're gonna pay for everything on a minor arterial, well, this one connects to minor arterials. And so, at least look at it as something other than a no outlet or a cul-de-sac. It's a through street. And so, when you, when you look at our project, I think you'll get answers to why we need a reduction in the size of the drainage pipe and why there needs to be room for the seventy-five percent cost share from the city, where public funds would be used to offset the public benefits. Public benefits are what the public funds are supposed to be utilized for. And so, if we have a street that has a lot of public benefit, it feeds a school, it has through-traffic lots of it, why wouldn't you be able to justify more public funds to make that project happen? Now, I'm here representing all twenty-one of the property owners in our SID, okay? Most of them couldn't get here because they couldn't get off work, or they're either too elderly or disabled to make that kind of a trip and sit here for this, this kind of a meeting. But they all feel very strongly that the city has a responsibility in this street that's more than fifty percent. We've gone to great lengths to make sure that you have every opportunity to see that. And in fact, I'd like to show you, again, a topographic map that I presented when we were, our SID was originally formed.
Ryan, if I could just interrupt you. Given what passed in the policy, you, you will have an opportunity in the future once you go forward to present your request for this additional relief. But if you could summarize your testimony here today, since we heard, we heard it all the last time you were here, and we have it as a part of the record, I think that would help us out. Thank you.
Here are some additional documents that will be referenced in the rest of my testimony, and I promise I will be as quickly as possible. But I gotta tell you, there's a lot to say, and, and we don't really wanna leave here with fifty percent. I mean...
Today's not the day that we decide that.
But we need to at least have all of you understand why it's necessary and why this would be something that you should consider and why it would be public value. So, if I have at least a couple of more minutes left, I could show you this. The shaded area highlights the valley that drains into Bridgewood Avenue. And our SID is only these two blocks right here, but we get water from the edge of Eighty-Fourth Street. It actually comes off the Pacific, and it comes from paved streets all the way over to the east and the west. This street right here was reclaimed shortly after I bought my house. They ground it up. They ground up the street and then told us that it was our responsibility. Okay? Sorry. The other map I wanted to show you is a map of the area that shows the value of having sidewalks and parkways on both sides of this street and how much, how valuable it is to the public. Because I know everyone's gonna say, "Sure, your street's valuable." But this is Ninetieth Street, this is Center, this is Pacific, and this is Exarban Village. Those black lines indicate that there is a sidewalk and a parkway on both sides of that street, making it a safer place for people to walk with a buffer between the vehicles and the cars. Bridgewood Avenue is right here. It's the only place between these two streets, Sixty-seventh and Ninetieth, where pedestrians can walk down either side of the street on a sidewalk and a parkway. So, here we are, looking at, at an opportunity to improve streets and make it safer. Okay, this isn't a cul-de-sac, this is not a, a, a no outlet, and it serves more through-traffic than it does local traffic. Last document I have for you compares the other SIDs that moved forward with fifty percent cost share on July eleven. The council moved forward with a fifty percent cost share resolution, and ours was removed because fifty percent is gonna make our, our project cost eighteen thousand dollars per homeowner. Okay, these are three examples of other streets. Leavenworth, and this is Ninety-Fourth Street, where it goes south of Center. And then, this is Eighty-Ninth Circle, just north of Burt Street. These streets see, these two streets literally see no through-traffic, and they were given a fifty percent cost share. This one up here sees very little through-traffic, and there are many other alternative routes through that neighborhood. Those, again, those were approved at fifty percent cost share. I don't have the specific details on what the estimated cost share is for those specific properties, but these two properties I do. This, these two projects are other SID projects. One is on sixty, One Hundred and Sixty-Fourth Street with twenty property owners. The other one is Seventy-Ninth Street and Shirley Street with twenty-eight property owners. Just to remind you, we have twenty-one property owners, and it takes up two blocks. Okay? They have no sidewalks on One Hundred and Sixty-Fourth Street. Most of the drainage comes from the abutting lots. And they're talking about a sanitary sewer pipe being replaced, too, in that project. Their estimated assessment, even after all that and fifty percent, is only eleven thousand dollars. Our estimated, the estimated property owner assessment on this SID, that's Seventy-Ninth Street and Shirley, Number Six Eight Eight Two, has twenty-eight property owners, no sidewalks, and very little through-traffic. Most of the drainage is from the abutting lots, and their estimated assessment is seven hundred, seven thousand eight hundred fifty-seven dollars. That's a lot different than eighteen thousand. And ours is a more public street. It's used, it's got more public value, so I would think it'd be easy to justify more public funding. If you wanna go back to those other three properties, if you subtract out the money that was itemized in the resolution, if you subtract our, our project and these other two projects, the amount of money that's left, that's devoted to these three projects, if you divide it by the homeowners, their average cost is seventy-eight, seventy-eight hundred and forty-six dollars apiece. So, you have an average cost of the ones we don't know, where it's seventy-eight hundred dollars apiece. And they're on streets that are hardly used by the rest of the public. dollars apiece, and they're on streets that are hardly used by the rest of the public. And then you have our street, that if you can't tell already, is, is quite valuable, the traffic comes to Loveland School right here, and comes down out through this way all the way to Eighty-Fourth, and it continues on to Center Street. When you have a collector road such as ours, that's connecting two minor arterials such as Pacific Street and Eighty-Fourth Street, and it's taking on water from other streets, and it needs to have a massive drainage pipe, nobody even knows how big the pipe's going to be yet, okay? The rest of these SIDs, those pipes are probably twelve inches if there's any, maybe eighteen. And so I would challenge that the standard for forty-two inches, okay, that was derived from someone who has experience with SI ANDs, where you're laying out huge subdivisions, and the cost is spread out over, at two, at two or three lots per acre, ours would be two hundred and forty lots would absorb the cost of this massive drain pipe. It would be assessed, it would be assessed under the general obligation, and the abutting property owners would pay an equal share with the rest of the people in the entire development. And that's why it becomes so inequitable to stick the cost of whatever pipe size is needed to drain the area to the abutting property owners. So here you have ours, with twenty-one property owners, sidewalks and parkways on both sides, much more through traffic than local traffic. In fact, I would bet my house that all six of those other properties that were, that moved forward two weeks ago, they don't have enough traffic combined to be more than what we have on this street and a school day. And so if you want to justify public, the use of public funds, and you want to be able to answer to people why the Bridgewood Avenue project needed a seventy-five percent city cost share, it's because the homeowners were willing to pay around ten thousand dollars to have that street done, and it serves the public. And so I hope that you folks can understand that this is a situation that can't be taken lightly, it can't be shoved under the rug, and it can't just be treated like it's any other project, okay? The access to the school is important, and we need to have a safe route for there. If we were to do this project, eighteen thousand dollars per property owner just, just wouldn't be fair. I also wanted to point out that these sidewalks, in, in the response we got from Public Works to the memo that we had, we had virtually no, it virtually didn't address our concerns, and didn't counter any of the points we established with that memo. And what I wanted to say is, in that, in that response, they cited an ordinance on the, on the, there's a little snippet attached to the color map, that they cited an ordinance giving them the authority to assess this for the sidewalks, and that's, that's all fair and good, but we need some relief somewhere else, because if you notice, in the ordinance, we were required to put those sidewalks in because it's a through street. Okay, so we've already got a precedent for being treated differently because it's a through street since nineteen seventy-one, when those sidewalks were put in. And I don't have the capability to go back and check, but I would bet that the cost of those sidewalks was already assessed to these lots once. And so tearing them up to put in an adequate drainage solution, and then a permanent street that the city can, can maintain easier, I think that, I think that that's, I think that that's a pretty obvious what you guys would need, what you folks would need to do. So the estimated property owner share of more than eighteen thousand at fifty percent is not fair nor equitable. However, an additional twenty-five percent reduction makes it comparable to other estimated property assessments at about nine thousand forty-seven dollars per property owner. We realize that the total project cost could exceed this estimate by as much as fifteen percent, so it's important that we're awarded the seventy-five twenty-five split at this juncture in order to keep the property owners committed and content. Thank you for your consideration and understanding, and again, for your work on this council. Your vote for the additional twenty-five percent is a real-life example of you working to fix city streets and helping to make them safer. Thank you for hearing my comments.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Just being recognized, okay. Are there any other, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed, Mr. Jarom.
Yes, I, I do think it's important that the Bridgewood people have an opportunity to have their extra twenty-five percent decided, since they went through the exercise today, and so they could know going forward. So I would, I would move that they would have, be allowed an extra ten percent cost share on their project. There's no second.
I'll second it.
No. You have a second.
Yeah, I'll second.
All right.
Roll call. Roll call.
Harding.
No.
Jarom.
Yes.
Melton.
No.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Amendment is approved, five to...
Second. Roll call. I'm sorry, go ahead.
This is forty-two as amended.
Yes.
Harding.
No.
Jarom.
Yes.
Melton.
No.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Tell me what it is again, sorry.
This is forty-two as amended.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item forty-two as amended, approved, five to two. Pursuant to City Council Rule Seven H, due to no meeting being held August first, twenty seventeen, the third reading on agenda items forty-three through forty-five shall be held on August eighth, twenty seventeen. Item forty-three, an ordinance approving the bid from Polydine Incorporated for the sledge dewandering polymer project with an annual estimated cost of a hundred ninety-one thousand four hundred dollars for a three-year term.
Public hearing on agenda item number forty-three is today, proponents please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed, next item.
Item forty-four, an ordinance to amend the pay range for the employment classification for city clerk by reassigning the salary range for the classification from twenty-six AEC to twenty-eight AEC.
Public hearing on agenda item number forty-four is today, proponents please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed, next item.
Item forty-five, an ordinance to amend the pay range for the employment classification for deputy city clerk by reassigning the salary range for the classification from seventeen AEC to nineteen AEC.
Public hearing on agenda item number forty-five is today, proponents please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed, next item.
Pursuant to City Council Rule Seven H, due to no meeting being held August first, twenty seventeen, the third reading and public hearings on agenda, agenda items forty-six and forty-seven shall be held on August fifteenth, twenty seventeen. Pursuant to City Council Rule Seven H, due to no meeting being held on August first, twenty seventeen, the public hearings on agenda items forty-eight through, through fifty-two shall be held on August eighth, twenty seventeen.
Motion, Jarom.
Motion, Jarom.
Moving seconded to Jarom, no lights, roll call.
Harding.
Yes.
Jarom.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero, meeting adjourned at four fifty-eight PM.